...for staff, George Bamba. And they are requesting a short delay in the session, the Committee of the Hall. And they're requesting a 45-minute delay. So what we're going to do is take a short recess until 11 o'clock. So recess till 11. Thank you, my colleagues, for your patience. We've just received the revisions on the revenue projections submitted by the administration just over the past few minutes. I've talked to Mr. John De La Rosa. And with that, I would like to afford the members of the legislative body the opportunity to review the numbers and so we can move accordingly. Again, because it's 11:30, and again, we have Mr. De La Rosa here with the administration, and not all the members of the administration coming in regards to finance here, I think the best thing for us to do is recess and then come back at 1:00 this afternoon. So the body will recess so that we can review the projections, the new revised projections, The Committee of the Hall is now in order, but I don't think... The Committee of the Hall is in order. Senator Speaker Forbes?
Thank you very much. Apparently yesterday, the chairman of the committee made a request that certain numbers that were in error, typographical or otherwise, in the bill that was transmitted, Bill 74, that we get a revision that corrected those errors. And the legislature is in receipt today of a transmittal from the legal counsel of the governor's office, addressed to myself and to the Honorable Eddie Basakalvo, Vice Speaker and Chairman of this committee, that contains a revised Chapter 2 of Bill 74. And this always presents an interesting technical dilemma for us because normally in the Committee of the Hall, motions are to... All right, here's our problem. Our problem is as follows. Normally in the Committee of the Hall, you amend, you delete, and that's pretty much all you do. But what we're faced with here is there was a technical error in the numbers. They needed to be changed, but I definitely am not in a position yet to say that I want to have a motion, I want to make a motion to adopt any of these numbers because we still haven't discussed them all. And normally, the motion would have to be to amend or delete, but if we made a motion to amend or delete a number because of a technical problem, under normal circumstances, it would be the equivalent of accepting the number and moving forward. I'm not prepared to do that. I'm not prepared to advance that motion at this point. I think there's still a lot of concern about some of these numbers, a lot of discussion about some of these numbers in terms of their accuracy as estimates, but I do concede the fact that it is pointless to proceed if there is a typographical error, an addition error, without correcting it because we'd constantly be referencing a number that is, on a technical basis, incorrect even from the perspective of the authors of the bill. So I would like to make a motion, notwithstanding the standing rules, the Mason's Manual, notwithstanding everything, that we simply substitute Chapter 2 without accepting it necessarily and continue to allow motions to amend and delete the constituent parts of Chapter 2. Because otherwise, we're going to be stuck. And I don't think anybody wants us to be stuck. I think they want us to move forward and not be stuck. And I certainly don't want, and I don't think the body wants at this juncture to adopt the entirety of Chapter 2 and move on to Chapter 3 because there's still questions about Chapter 2. So my motion is as follows. My motion is notwithstanding Mason's, notwithstanding the standing rules, notwithstanding indeed the natural laws of the universe, notwithstanding the dictates on Mount Sinai, notwithstanding Hammurabi's Code as promulgated in ancient Babylon, notwithstanding the ancient Pharaonic Book of the Dead, or any other source of authority, I would like to move that what we do is we simply substitute the Chapter 2 that has been mailed to, or that was sent to us by the Leo Counsel of the Governor for the Chapter 2 that is contained in the bill, but continue to allow further motions to amend and delete so that we are not adopting these revenues.
Ever since we started this discussion, Mr. Speaker, nobody has made a motion or amendment to the bill itself.
I know, but this is...
We were in general discussion. Actually, basically, your motion is to more or less re-substitute the substitute version.
I understand that.
Okay, and notwithstanding the House rules. So is there any objection to that, understanding that we can change at any time, you know, what we got here? Senator Simisso?
Mr. Chairman, didn't we request the administration to go back and, based on their submission of their spreadsheets? And they have done that, I think, two times, maybe three? And are we saying that we're not able to act on the original and make the adjustment as we go along in terms of what we had requested them?
Speaker, would you like to reply to Senator Simisso's question?
See, the problem, Senator, is I don't think any of us, and definitely not me, I'm not prepared to adopt the revenue. But the problem is, is that the error that Senator Calvo was talking about yesterday is an error that is technical in nature. It's an arithmetic error. It's not an error of substance, it's an error of form. Yeah, we could continue to discuss the bill as submitted, but we'd constantly be referring to a number that everyone agrees, including the administration, is erroneous in form, and it would just tend to retard the discussion, I think. So the motion I'm making does not accept their numbers and say, okay, this is the revenue estimate. What it does is it says, we're going to accept this new thing so they can clean up the numbers, that's all. And then we can continue to amend and delete as we see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaker Pignan.
Mr. Speaker, on that motion, having reviewed the new submittal, the one being offered to be substituted, and doing a quick calculation, I find that really, the bottom line total does not change. It's a reallocation and a further delineation of the categories of the different income categories. And it's tantamount to just, you know, rearranging the new chairs on the Titanic. So we're still on the same boat, and so I have no objection to the motion to substitute.
And that, you know, there's certainly order in terms of the discussion, and if the motion is passed, you know, I would like to suggest that you just move whatever you had before, and let's only deal with this. And it is the understanding of the body, and my understanding as the chair, that nothing that we have in front of us has been really accepted, per se. Okay, so on that motion, we fought objections, so ordered. Okay, we're back to Mabry. Senator Calvo?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, I want to thank the administration for sending us these revisions.
Senator Calvo, wait. Okay, everybody has a copy of the new form, right?
And also the...
Okay, get rid of the one that we have been discussing for the last three, four days. Put it aside. And everybody has a copy of the worksheet that has the star. Yes, right? Okay, so we can be on the same page. But will we also have the, some indication of the transmittal today? This is what we'll be discussing. Yes, we do have the transmittal of the two sent to the Honorable Mark Forbes, CC, the Honorable Eddie Basakalvo, and from Christine Targle, the governor's legal office.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so Senator Calvo, I'm sorry, but this is just to make sure that we're on the same page. Thank you. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to make very clear here, I'm reading off the star. Again, I'm going back to, we were in the portion of the bill that dealt with withholding taxes, interest, and penalties. And I understand that there's going to be discussions because of, there has been some changes in amnesty in the different areas, but I want to just go to the area that I was focusing the day before. I do want to make note, and again, I talked to Mr. Ilagan, and he, there was, it's not a mistake, it's just that when they put the language in regarding to withholding tax amnesty, obviously, it put withholding interest and penalty amnesty, which is incorrect. You know, that's the whole basis of amnesty is to have these passed due taxes paid and waived.
Forgiven.
So just for, after discussions with Art and with the administration, in that area where it says withholding interest and penalties and amnesty, that's an error there, it's withholding tax amnesty.
Senator Calvo, you can always make reference to line 21, page 30.
There you go. So line 21, withholding interest and penalty amnesty, and then at the request of the administration to delete the interest and penalty, and that's withholding amnesty.
Okay, the motion is to delete interest and penalty. On line 21 of page 3, Chapter 2. Senator Simisso?
So they're asking to remove $3 million?
No, 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 just the wording interest and penalty.
And then what would be in lieu of...
Withholding amnesty.
It's just withholding amnesty?
Correct.
And is that...
Withholding tax.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, so you want to include withholding tax. Now, so on line 21, withholding, strikeout, interest and penalty, and in its place, you add in withholding income tax amnesty.
Withholding tax.
Okay, withholding...
I guess you could put it withholding taxes, like the category above it.
Yep, the category above it. On line 18, it's with individual income tax amnesty.
On 19, look at 19.
And then 19, just withholding tax.
Right, withholding taxes.
So you want to delete on number 21, line 21, withholding is in, what's the next?
Interest and penalty.
No, you wanted to delete that word.
Right.
So delete interest and penalty, and in...
Replace it with tax.
Place what?
Replace it with tax, withholding tax.
Just put withholding.
Okay, that is your motion, Senator Calvo, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you're correct, Senator Simisso, on that motion, any objection?
No objection.
Senator Cuthberts?
Thank you. I have a question on the withholding taxes amnesty. Mr. Ilagan?
Just a minute. We're just, the motion right now is just to delete interest and penalty and in lieu thereof...
Just the words?
Words.
Okay.
Put the word tax. We fought objection, then so ordered. I think Senator Calvo still have the...
Questions.
Okay, sure.
Boy, the sound, okay. There was a lot of loud crickets here. Going back onto the withholding taxes, and again, I want to thank you for the spreadsheet, and I put a big star there, so for you folks, it's spreadsheet with a big star. When we look at withholding interest and penalties for fiscal year, and I'm looking at '07, which is the bottom line of the sheet that's been provided, the, from the portion from October through to February in the last line, so you have October at $12,711, November $11,944, December $13,920, January $15,362, and February $12,825. Those are actuals, correct?
Yes, they should be actuals.
Those should be, yeah, because that's the last AF400 system we report we have, it's the actuals as of February 28th. So from there on, from March, April, May, June, July, August, September, those are all projections for '07, correct?
I believe the October to February are draft numbers as shown on top.
Yeah, the draft, yeah, there you go, it says draft. Okay, draft, but they're the draft actual numbers.
Right.
Okay.
And then from March to September, they're estimates.
Sure, obviously, because we haven't completed March and moving forward, correct?
That's correct.
Now, when you compare fiscal year '06 to '07, now fiscal year '06 obviously are actuals from October through February, and then from October to February through '07, they're the draft actuals, correct?
Right, correct.
Now, if you do the additions and the subtractions, if you recall what I mentioned a little bit earlier on yesterday, then we are at about $190,000 year-to-date above the previous year, correct?
That's correct.
Now, as you move forward into March, April, May, June, July, August, September, it becomes very evident that there's been some major reductions on your projections. If you go through March, it's, last year, we were $16,233, this year, you're projecting $13,263. Last year, April, you were, you actually, you had actuals of $16,328, you're projecting for this year $11,814,255. And then, of course, if you go on through the rest of the year, you're seeing, by and large, the same type of drops, or some months dramatic, some are slight, some of them there's slight increases. But bottom line, by the end of the year, you're projecting $155,143,393, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, fiscal year 2006, and these are the actuals, fiscal year 2006, withholding taxes you collected in total $164,515,324, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You are now, with these new numbers, projecting withholding tax collections at $155,433,92, or 393 or 392, 393? I just want to make sure here. 390, oh, I'm sorry, 393, okay? Now, again, what that means is we are looking at about nine and a, close to nine and a half million dollar reduction in actual collections based on the previous fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
Now, when I asked you, when I read these numbers here, now, they give numbers, and they give it from all the way from '99 to '07, and I still, I tried to get an idea on how, what the formulas were that were utilized in order to get the end-of-year projection, which you had stated is at $155 million, again, which is fairly, about a negative 5%, almost 6% reductions from the previous year. And that is when, I think, Art, you mentioned, there's a lot of subjectivity, and that with the increase in individual income taxes, that obviously, there's going to be a decrease in withholding, correct?
That's correct.
And I can see it. Boy, I tell you, for corporate, we're up, I mean, for individual, we're up year-to-date over 31%, 32% from the previous fiscal year, correct? The other night, I was thinking about it. Now, I'm not going to do the old economics formulas, and I know you've done your formula, just against, being subjective, since a lot of these projections, again, Lou mentioned and you yourself, there's a lot of subjectivity. And I thought about it. The reason for why there has been a collapse in withholding tax collections, and there's been a lot of assumptions made, no polls taken, but a lot of folks are saying, at least, this is what I've been hearing, they've been paying their, they've been taking, they've been getting their withholding, their deductions and their paycheck, come year-end, they're owed money by the government, you know, a lot of money. And the problem with most individuals in this island of taxpayers is that they wait a year, they wait two years, sometimes three years, to get their income tax refund, the money that they overpaid to the government, correct?
That's correct.
And so it's obvious that the reason for why these withholdings are down, or why that big freefall occurred a couple of years ago, was people just decided, well, I'm fed up, we're not going to get our tax refund, so we reduce our deduction, and, well, we just pay the consequences at the end of the fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
So again, that's why I anticipate that individual income taxes will go up April because people want to pay their taxes. And I thought about it, just subjectivity. If I'm a guy or a lady that has been doing, again, I went to my payroll clerk, and this is company, this is company, I don't know, the Islander Company, Islander Corporation. So Islander Corporation, I go to my payroll clerk, I'm a worker, and I'm saying, man, change this deduction because I'm not getting my tax refund. So it's been going on, and whether, whenever the heck you made that change, I'll deal with the consequences later. So come April, and obviously, April, I went to H&R Block, I said, man, I owe 500 bucks. So I scrounge up for money, and I pay my tax. Now, subjectively, I mean, this is all subjective, when I pay that income tax at the end of the fiscal year, do I then come to a realization that, man, I got to make a change? And does that realization for that change mean then I'm going to say to myself, man, maybe I better, maybe I better even reduce my withholding even greater because I paid more in income tax? Does that seem logical?
People are doing it.
No, you don't understand, I'm saying, we've been tracking for the first five months withholding taxes that are stable, and I consider it stable. We're only slightly up by $190,000. But I'm just Joel Cruise in the road, in the street, and I already made my adjustments several months back, last year, that there's a reduction in my withholding. And then comes the end of the fiscal year, and I have to pay an income tax. Now, obviously, you made a subjective decision that though we're tracking at a stable rate, at a stable amount, then a subjective decision has been made by the administration that for the next seven months, there will be this, and this is what I figure, I see in April, I see in March, last year, you had $16,200,000, you've projected $13,000,000 for March. Last year, April, you projected $16,300,000, this year, you're projecting $11,814,000. You made a slight increase in May of about 100 grand from $12,300,000 to $12,400,000. In June, you dropped from 16, actual, these are actual numbers, from 16.3 to 11.8. Now, and I'm just being subjective, if this is how you calculated moving forward, if I'm going to pay an income tax at the end of the fiscal year in April, does that mean then I will go to my payroll clerk and say, hey, can you make sure that I pay less in withholding? Does that make, and I'm, or would I say, man, this is subjective, since this is all subjective here, this is all moving forward, we're not looking at historical fact for the past two years, we're looking forward? But then do I say to my payroll clerk, Mrs. Istokio, I've, I've, I've had to pay $500 in income tax, maybe I better withhold a little bit more? So on assumptions, assumptions have been made here, obviously, you've made this decision in the administration that though we're tracking at a stable withholding, there's going to be a collapse of nearly, almost $10 million from the previous year, that there's going to be a conscientious decision by the regular taxpayer out there that they will reduce their withholding tax as, they pay their taxes in income tax, so as a result of that, paying that increased income tax, they're going to reduce their withholding. Does that seem logical?
It doesn't seem logical for the people that have to pay.
Yeah.
But there are people that are owed refunds from prior years that would...
Yeah.
There are people that are owed refunds for 2004 and 2005, and they would want to take that as a credit instead of paying through the year. So some of them are claiming that way.
So you're saying they're going to take a credit, but even with taking that credit, they're going to go to their payroll clerk, and they're going to request for even reducing the withholding even more? Because, I mean, in order to take, in order to have a reduction in your withholding tax collections from the prior fiscal year by close to, you know, nine and a half million bucks, there's, and we only got seven months to work on it, obviously, there's going to be a major decision by workers to talk to their payroll clerks to make this decision to withdraw even less. And again, it's subjective, I'm trying to figure the formula, because you didn't give me the formula here, but I obviously see that whatever your formula was in the spreadsheet, it calls for a major, major reduction on withholding tax collections from the previous fiscal year, actual. It also, based on the numbers that you have on actual year-to-date from the previous fiscal year, we do not see that trend. We actually see a $200,000 increase. I'm a little bit perplexed, and again, I want to understand with the formula you had, maybe you better explain the formula, how you had it, but how, and maybe then included in the subjectivity, ask you how this came about, because I'm going to have the same issues with the gross receipts tax when we get to that.
In addition to your comments, Senator, this is the first, 2005 is the first year that we're paying out EICO also, and a lot of people are realizing that people that are making average like $14,000 to $16,000 a year are getting maybe $3,000 to $4,000 EIC. At that, a lot of people are going to go back and change the withholding because they have their EIC coming, their earning income coming for that particular year. So if you're looking at...
You're talking about, they're going to get additional cash.
Right.
So if, and then just logically, so if you get additional cash in through the EITC, you're going to get additional cash in, then what you're saying is from getting additional cash in through the EITC, the logical next step, based on your formulation here, is that I want to reduce withholding even more? I don't get the connect.
Because there's a lot of benefits that, especially the additional South Tax Credit, you get all those benefits that come. you get all those benefits that come, so there's no really need to really look at the withholding. For example, a person that makes probably 14,000 dollars with one kid, is probably going to get about 4,500 dollars of refunds.
Yeah.
Because of the EIC, so there's no really need for withholding. I heard a lot of private companies going back and changing their withholdings, because they're tired of waiting for the refunds. And this EIC that is coming in is in addition to that, to that concept.
And, okay, boy, that's, I just tell you, boy, you folks, I wish I can, you know, when it comes to winning the Super Bowl, I want you folks with me. Because, I'm just saying, if that, you know, that's a plausible answer, I'm just saying, based on the past five months, and I could say, with withholding taxes, year-to-date, revenues sure are holding up pretty good, and with revenues holding up, you have made, and, right, it's subjective, but a lot of assumptions have been made, in order to come to the conclusion, that we are going to have a nine and a half million dollars reduction on actual withholding tax collections, as compared to the previous fiscal years. Okay? I mean, I, at this point, I understand what you're saying, but thank you. This is the questions I have all, in regarding to withholding taxes at this point. Thank you.
Senator Pangolian?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Art, I just have maybe one question, that is an anomaly, that I look like, and it really doesn't relate to this fiscal year, but I'm curious. In the withholding interests and penalties, I mean, withholding interests and penalties in fiscal year 2003, right? You take a look at June, is it, actually, July and August, and you see just a huge spike in those months. You recall what could have caused that, and could we duplicate that in this July and Anything come to mind of what would have, what was there? Yeah. For those, just for those two months? And then, we saw a drop in the next month, but not, nothing to account for even one-third of what the spike were in those two months. John, you recall anything happening back then?
I don't recall, but maybe, we might look into the receivables of the withholding, to see if there's any big payment during that particular month, or those particular months. I don't know if amnesty was in place during that period, I'm not too sure, but we can look at the receivables.
Yeah, but if you looked at it, if there was a huge receivable, then all the other months would have reflected a reduction, but not really, right? Yeah, they're all fairly consistent. So, I would just kind of, that just struck me as, you know, quite a jump. Yeah, especially because these are actual numbers, I mean, you know, maybe they're settlements from five years ago.
Maybe you found somebody that didn't pay that much.
Yeah, that wasn't, I won't say their name, never mind. But, so, just on, again, the assumption on this withholding, Art, is that, I'm trying to reconcile this increase in employment, that we all seem to agree will occur, right? I mean, we're seeing a little bit of a ramp up in some of the employment, we're seeing, actually, you know, I'll give, you know, some room there, that we're seeing more ads in the paper for more positions, and unless, and some of them are really not that entry level, some are mid-level manager positions and so forth, and I know that's not a huge number, but we're seeing a little bit of an increase in economic activity, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the GRT and so forth. And that would indicate into, that's generated by increased employment, probably, and income being spent. Yet, we're seeing, again, you know, just the reduction in the projections, in trying to figure out how do those two reconcile?
So, a lot of times, we see an increase in employment, but the corresponding increase in tax from previous years is not as great as the numbers. It's because the way, it's federal tax, and there's a lot of credits that are given to, because of the federal government and President Bush, so, part of it is a rate reduction, the rates going down, the acceleration of the child tax credit from 400, 500 to 1,000 dollars a year. So, a lot of that factors, in theory, would reduce, or not, the rates won't be as great as the employment going up. It will go up, but not as fast, probably, because of those changes.
Okay. Are there any changes in the, you know, I think there's some federal programs in which employers get credit for job creation? Is anything in the works, or are there any changes in those tax credits for job creation on, from the employer's side, that you could see impacting this?
We're not, I'm not sure. I can find out and let you know about that.
Okay. Because I think that's, I know that there are certainly, like, in some states, you know, there's job creation tax credits for employers, and so forth, and I don't know if those, I'm not sure whether all of that is part of the federal tax code, or just limited to state tax codes and so forth. But I do know that there are some federal credits for job creation, that companies can take care of. What about depreciation expenses, and any changes in there that could affect the corporate taxes?
I think there's some of them in the prior years.
Uh-huh.
But they're minimal, they're not that big to make a difference.
So, there are no more SUV credits and all that, right? All of that have expired?
Yeah, you still have those things, but they're not that huge to make a difference, or big difference on tax.
Okay, all right.
Unlike the child credit, where you get 1,000 dollars off your liability.
I think part of it, too, is if you own stocks, domestic stocks.
Right.
There's a special rate for that, it's not taxed at the regular rate, there's a reduction, I think it's at capital gains.
Yes, there's a reduction, it's still at a 15%, that was extended, capital gains on stock investments, so that, they extended that. So, okay, so, the other question, Art, let me just kind of try to get to a bottom line here, in this, how confident are you with these numbers now? In terms of, I know we've played around with the numbers, we've expanded the numbers, contracted the numbers, expanded them back up once again, but in, at the end of the day, when, if we pass this as presented, how confident are you that the revenues we will receive, you know, in order to run this government, is going to be what we have before us?
The way we worked it out, with the numbers that are presented to you, is we looked at what we were saying before, the earning credit, the refunds that we feel we're going to get in, in April, and how people think of the government's ability to pay their debts. And these numbers are, to me, conservative numbers, so that we do not come September 30, and, you know, we overestimated our amounts, that, you know, we're just accumulating debt, because our revenues are overstated. We allowed ourselves to allow for growth, a little growth, for, just as example, we felt maybe EIC is about 20 to 25 million dollars more that we have to pay, so, we feel maybe these taxpayers that are going to get EIC will probably just zero out their withholding to get EIC, because they're probably just going to get money back.
Right, anyway.
Yeah, anyway, so, why give the government the money, when they're going to get money back? We just came up with maybe some amount, like, maybe half of them are just going to not pay in, if they go, you know, if they're thinking financially, which I hope they are, maybe some of them may not, and they're just, you know, just file the tax and see what we get.
Yeah. Art, on, if I may, just go back a little bit on the amnesty program, for all categories, especially all income tax categories, withholding, as well as individual and corporate. The collection of these revenues are going to be crucial, the cash collection are going to be crucial to meeting the operational needs, otherwise, you know, we have to either cut the expenditure levels, the cash outlay levels, I don't even want to say expenditure anymore, just the cash outlay level, because that's really the crux of the problem that we're facing. So, if we don't have, if we don't bring in, for example, let's say the tax amnesty, it's a 30-day period, and our cash outlay to run the government operation as presented in this budget, is, for discussion purposes, a million dollars every pay period. We're counting that, that 9 million dollars of tax amnesty is going to come in, you know, in that, in, within maybe a million a month, for each of the remaining months, and 1.5 million towards the back end of the month, because crunch time, and everybody wants to file before it expires. What would happen if we don't collect that 1 million dollars from the tax amnesty, and our outlay is still, you know, let's say...
Same rate.
Same. And we don't have the cash to support that?
Then we dig, I'm not Lou, but I think Lou handles cash, then we would start borrowing from the people through not paying refunds.
There we go. That's what's going to happen, again. We would slow down the payment of income tax refunds.
And vendor payments.
And vendor payments, even greater. Because this does not assume that we pay those vendor payments even, that we catch up, does it? This does not, this budget and this revenue stream does not assume, or does not plan for paying our vendors that we've owed, past due accounts, it's just to meet the cash requirements for, from April going forward, so we don't catch up. And if we don't meet these targeted cash collection, in order to support our cash outlay, then something's got to give. And the only place that we can have that give at this time, without affecting any of the other costs, is income tax refunds. That's the only thing that we can fudge, other than salaries, correct?
Right.
Or vendor payments. And vendor payments, probably for the rest of the year, vendor payments are probably no more than 20, 30 million, I would say, if that, for the rest of the six months, really. You're talking about power and some of the contractual stuff, but probably not that. So, the additional requirement of 200 million dollars, maybe for the rest of this fiscal year, because that's about where we're at, because we've actually outlaid a little bit more than half of the budget, in terms of encumbrances and disbursements, we've spent more than half of the budget. So, the cuts have got to come, and that's really my question, that's really what I had asked the governor to present to us, you know, because we do have a plan, we have to plan for the plan of the, you know, and not meeting plan. And where are we going to do that? I would like to know and see that, and so, perhaps, you know, that's something that will be forthcoming, I spoke with Lou briefly this morning, they said they're preparing those schedules. But I want to see that before I even want to approve this, because of that factor.
We just have to do things right, because when we don't do things right, we end up paying for the mistakes that we didn't do right.
Absolutely.
We've done that in the past, where we let people go, and then they go somewhere, and they take us to court, and they get their monies anyways, and they didn't do the work. So, we just have to do it properly.
Yeah. And so, that really concludes my question on this section, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Guthrie, we recognize you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased that we seem to be making some progress today. It's great. I do have a couple of questions. One is, I'm just curious, Art, why Mr. Bamba's not with us, and why the Director of BBMR is not with us?
George Bamba is really sick, he's, he went to see a doctor, he's got, he's been really weak the last few days. He can't make it, he said if he was well, he would have been here.
Okay.
I don't know what Carlos is, last I heard, he was working on the '08, and the amendments to the '08 budget.
Okay. But you're assuring us that you are representing the position of the governor on all the matters we're discussing at this time?
On the revenue side, that I was involved with.
Okay. Now, just out of curiosity, the new communication we received today, on the withholding taxes amnesty, something occurred to me, and I'm curious about it. Do any government of Guam agencies, either lying or autonomous, owe any withholding taxes to the Department of Revenue Tax?
That, I have, I don't have that on hand, I got to check my receivables and see, and I can get that to you.
Okay. I'm wondering, how do you treat government of Guam instrumentalities that do not pay the withholding taxes to your department, when they're supposed to? Are there any penalties against them that are executed?
We usually treat them like any other taxpayers. If they can't make payments, then, the last time we did it with the Department of Education, we levied, we just levied, and we assessed tax and the penalties.
You actually levied penalties against them?
But, you know, if they come back and they say, I'll pay the tax.
Then you waive the penalties.
Because they're government.
Okay, now, that's my point, is, I assume there are many, many entities on the island from the private sector that are in arrears on withholding taxes, would I be correct to say that?
Yes, there is, there's some, I don't know if there's...
Now, when they are in arrears, you execute penalties with reference to those entities?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do you ever waive the penalties for private businesses, other than the tax amnesty situation?
If we, if they come in and they request due hardship, or some reasonable causes, we look at those, and then we try to, I guess, solve some of their problems, in making payments, because we don't want to either shut them down, because of the penalties. It's just working with the taxpayers. Part of the problems in the past was, we weren't trained enough to handle the receivables as we are today. Today, we've had, our employees have been trained in several phases of collections, that I'm very confident they know what they're doing, in allowing waivers of these penalties.
The reason I'm bringing this up is, one of the concerns that is often expressed to me by citizens in the community, is the double standard that may exist, in the way we treat government agencies that owe tax money to the Department of Revenue Taxation, and the way we treat private businesses, and individual citizens. And I want to hear, and I'm hoping I'm hearing from you, that we do not give special treatment to government agencies, that they are expected to pay in a timely manner, and if they don't, the same process that is used with reference to private entities are used with reference to the government?
When we waive penalties, we look for a reason, we don't just waive the penalties, and if a government entity has a reason for not paying their withholding, or any, anything else, we look at their reasons when we...
Okay. And just as a follow-up, since the Attorney General issued her directive to... And just as a follow-up, since the Attorney General issued her directive to Guam Public School System that they must pay the gross payments due all employees every pay period, have you seen an increase in receipts for withholding taxes from that department?
I haven't looked at it, but I can get you that number.
I would just like to know.
Sometimes if they don't file it, it's not there for us to look at. So we just have to go and look for them to file those returns.
Okay. I guess the point on this, just this one issue is that we need to be very careful that we don't give the government a pass and then be harsh with individual citizens or businesses when they're late, you know? You're aware of that?
We try to be fair.
Try to be fair, okay.
We look at reasons. We don't just, you know, shut you down and take your penalties. If you have reasons, come see us and we'll talk about it.
Okay, good. I'll have more questions later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Senator Lujan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, going back to then these projections and going back to what former Speaker Pangolin was asking, Art, in regards to your comfort level in these, in the predictions of this, of, or projections, you would say, again, can you repeat? You have a great comfort level in that?
We were very, we were conservative in the numbers because we felt, being conservative, and if there's a surplus in the end, there's numbers that we can, I guess, monies that we can use because we're looking at monies and not, monies to use for education, for refunds, for any of other vendor payments or any other expenses that we're not able to pay. And that was based on, again, looking at EIC payments that we're giving out now, which is between 20 to 25 million dollars a year and how people would, if they're financially skilled in planning their year, if they know that they're going to get a refund in addition to the refunds they're getting, EIC, they would make an adjustment on their withholding.
Okay, now, again, back where Senator Pangolin pointed out the spike on July and August back in '03 and you said you're going to have to get back to us into what caused that spike up? And then the following month, actually after July, I mean, August, September, you had a big decrease, okay? Do you have a forecasting? You know, I mean, yeah, do you have a forecasting model?
If everything was straight line and nothing changed, it's all right to forecast in straight line, but things have changed over the last two years, like EIC, additional credits, increase in child tax credits that are granted by the federal government. Those numbers are, have to be looked at separately from the-
No, and I understand that, okay? So really, you don't have a, you don't really have a forecasting? Because my next question would be, if you did have a forecasting, when did you get this forecasting model? So you're saying, really, we don't have a forecasting because these other, these other impediments supposedly had come in to play, right?
When they do the forecast, you got to look at different things after you do the forecast, like EIC, which was just approved. When was EIC approved, John? What year was it? 2005? Tax year 2005? Yeah, that was just last year. So, and that was a settlement to agree to pay out the 2005. The 2004 and prior, it's still based on the revenues that we receive through the next eight years and the refunds we pay out.
Okay, because, you know, I mean, I'm still kind of, you know, this is still basically a good, I guess, in your comfort level, you have some comfort level. We're trying to get the most educated guess that we can, right? Is that what we're doing? Okay. You know, I'm very concerned because, you know, we've got people's lives on the line here, basically, and you're asking the body of 15 here to make, to make a decision, to vote on a bill. And I understand we should be voting on a bill that is, that is a well-educated guess as opposed to a wild guess. And the questions that are, have been coming forth, basically, are questions that are pointing to not necessarily educated guesses, but more of wild guesses. Case in point here, if we're going to find out, try to find out, how many cars travel down Marine Drive? If I send one of my staff and go down there and they go down there at 2:00 in the morning and sit out there for an hour, they come back and say, "Well, there are two cars that go down Marine Drive for an hour." I multiply that times 24, that's what I get, to actually put that down. Now, when I send another staffer to go down and he decides to go down there at noon, you're going to have a different number. I have another staffer that go down there at 5:00. We're going to have a different number. And those numbers being absolute. You know, this body of 15 is going to have to take some people's words in numbers that are well-educated guesses. And that's why I'm asking a forecast. Now, if there was a, if there's a forecast, how is it tracking? Sturism numbers going up? Building permits going out there? Collections, we're looking at collections, we're looking, we're factoring in amnesty programs here and things like that. I think we're very optimistic, extremely optimistic, optimistic in our collections. And that's why I introduce my bill this morning and what number do, Bill 82? Because I think your collections, I want to help you guys out in that. But, you know, we have a different set of numbers. I think they reflect that yesterday's numbers here. But in the past, and I know we've kind of got rid of these, these other numbers that we, that were supposed to be the educated guess numbers the past few days, the absolutes. Kind of reminds me of Moses going up to Sinai and coming down and say, "These really are the words of God and we want you to adhere to the words of God." And then we find out that really the person, the people that brought it down kind of scripted their own laws coming down. This body needs to make an absolute vote, whether to accept this bill or not. And these numbers have not, have been less than an educated guess as opposed to a wild guess. And, you know, in any forecasting, I mean, I understand that we have EIC and other, other things that have come up, but we have to have some kind of model. This body's been asking the methodology in which we come up with these numbers and what, where do we get these numbers? We have to come up with some numbers. And me, I mean, I'm looking at this and, I mean, I saw the chairman of the committee asking some questions and he turned around in kind of awe and, you know, it was just, to me, there are those numbers and we can fudge the numbers. And I, personally, I cannot, I cannot go with numbers. I'm not comfortable in the methodology. I'm not comfortable in that there's, there's not a steady forecasting and you can't tell us really the forecasting other than the best wild guess that we can take as opposed to the best educated guess that we can take. And to me, these numbers are just a bunch of manure. Because it's not, you know, you're asking us to decide on people's lives and to determine people's tomorrow. And we're determining people's tomorrow based on numbers of manure that you're giving us. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Senator Shimizu?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Just a quick question. You know, earlier we had, in '92, when we're forwarding interest and penalty, is Revenue Tax now have the authority to waive interest or just the penalty side?
When you're doing the amnesty, we're just going to collect the withholding tax, the tax itself?
Just the tax itself? Not, no interest on top of it or penalty for? Okay. And, okay, now, I needed to clarify that. So it's just the tax itself that you would give the amnesty on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shimizu.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Art, promise I'm going to make it as simple as possible and hoping that I can get a better understanding on the, this income tax amnesty and just, just trying to get a better understanding. So please bear with me, I promise I'll keep it as simple as possible, okay? You noted here with this submission that you are still anticipating and generating that additional 13 million if we're allowed this tax amnesty, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We just broke it down into categories.
Right, into categories. And how did you arrive at that 13 million?
Basically, we look at the total receivables and we filter out those receivables that are inactive and then we look at all the active receivables and we base it on the amounts of balance for each category and we derive at a percentage. So meaning that on the individual, it's a big, big receivable, then we, we tend to collect more on the individuals than the corporate where the receivable is a lot smaller.
Okay, okay. So then, how much do you estimate is currently owed to the government in outstanding income tax due for filed and unfilled tax returns?
Unfiled, these are all filed returns. We don't have any estimation of unfilled returns, Senator. We don't.
Okay, so what about for the filed?
Just bear with me, I'm going to-
No, that's okay. Take your time and just want to make sure that we go through this thoroughly.
Okay, your question is, what was that again? Senator, your question was, what's the receivable?
How much do you estimate is currently owed to the government, our government, in outstanding income tax? And you said you didn't have anything for the unfilled tax returns?
On income tax, they're consistently, basically, on individual withholding and corporate.
Okay.
So I'll just give you the individuals. It's 31.6 on the individual. Withholding is 17.4 and the corporate tax is 9.1. These are the active receivables. So the inactive, you know, it's very hard to collect from the, from the inactive receivable, which is about 20, 27 million dollars.
Meaning you've exhausted all the means for the inactive receivables and you're, that 21 million, there's no way of getting it back?
No, it's still, it's still, it's still a receivable, but it's just put in active right now. These are the taxpayers that are off island or people, we can't locate or-
Return to center.
Yes.
So 31.6, 17 million, 9.1, and then the uncollectibles is what, 24? What'd you just say?
27.
27. The last time we did this and revenue tax, what year was that when we, when, when the tax amnesty was granted?
That was, I think, that was the year 1999.
Okay. In that time, in 1999, how much was collected back then, based on the methodology you used?
I can't really recall even the entire amnesty amount. I can't really recall how much. I have to go back and look at it.
Okay. I think what I'm trying to get here is trying to account, as we go through this amnesty, is trying to account what was successful back then, what is happening today, what can we do to make it even better so that we can account for the true numbering system here? I just, the reason why I ask that, John, is, is in order for us to get a true accounting, we need to have a successful model in orders to, so that when we project for this time, we know that the numbers are more concrete.
I just-
I mean, I really don't want it to be an educated guess. I really don't. I really want to know what the tracking is so that we can try and understand and get the hard numbers.
I don't know the bottom, the bottom figure, but I recall at one point in time during that amnesty, that there was a $25 million collection. But I, I can't hold that to me as a total collection for the, but I remember at one time, we collected about $25 million.
We also learned a lot from the last amnesty, policies that we weren't set back then that we are setting up today. And we're also a lot more trained in our, in our collection efforts than we were several years ago. Back then, you know, it was over a longer period of time and it was, there was no cutoff. Like, let's say it was for six months and then on the, on the last day of the sixth month, somebody comes in or several people comes in with a request for amnesty and it was approved. And then it was not paid through, you know, several months after that. So what we're trying to do is just say, hey, between this month and this month, pay your tax. And not, you know, stretch it out over, you know, a payment plan like we did before.
So, so, so you've got some differences of, of collection methodology that you're going to use this time as compared to the last time?
Right, just from experience.
And can you detail right now what those, that methodology is going to be right now that made a difference?
I think, John, we have that policy.
I just want to, want to see what, what has happened back then, what is going to happen today to make that percentage and that projection?
I think what, what prolonged the amnesty back then was basically the, we allowed the taxpayer to submit an application and the department do a compliance check and that prolonged the process. Of course, when you have thousands of taxpayers coming in and applying for the amnesty, we would have to take that and do a compliance check. What we're trying to do now is basically that we're putting that on the taxpayers to come up with those compliance that say that they actually filed those returns and these are the amounts that they owe and they should come in and pay it at a deadline. And that's the main difference between back then and now.
Well, when we look at the justification on the percentages, what we're looking at projecting at 29, 20, and 10, and we don't have the methodology of what has happened in the past, how can you weigh the?
We also look at the, the collection of prior years receivables, where the receivables are coming from. And most of the collections in the, at least for the last two fiscal years are coming from the individual because they're bigger and also on the, on the, with GRT, which is a lot, a lot bigger also. So that's where we came with the, with the ratio.
I guess, Mr. Chair, what I'm really trying, trying to get at is trying to find the percentages that back then so that we can know the difference, so that we can, can justify, instead of getting an educated guess, that we can actually justify the actuals on what we're working with. And I think it's really- And I think it's really important that we look at what we have done, work the percentages there, and based on what you're looking, so that we know what the difference is, so that we can actually not just give that educated guess.
We can get those numbers for you and show them, but you know, in any other category, if you want numbers and the method, it's going to take a long time for us to go through all the numbers when you're asking for the worksheets, I mean, is that the way we? I'm just asking, I'm not...
No, I'm only asking that is because you're projecting a solid 13 million based on the category breakdown, and if we've done this in the past and we've utilized whatever methods back then, what methods now are we going to use today to realize this and not just make that educated guess? So I guess the difference is in knowing that the collections back then, which are actuals, versus today. What can solidify that?
We can get those numbers, we're not prepared right now to give it to you.
It's just, it just kind of puzzles me to know that it was noted that you're really beefing up, and then we see the revenue projections that there's a reduction here, and then we work with the allotments that were already authorized, and some agencies having a... Some agencies were already fully funded and we're only right there at the halfway mark. Where do we go from here?
I understand, I can get those numbers, the history of...
So, Mr. Chair, just trying to get that point of clarification through.
I think hypothesis is what they call an educated guess, and educated guess is based on the education derived from experience, so your points are well taken. Any other members on this category? Senator Pangalena?
Thank you. Art or John, on the tax amnesty portion, are you assuming that the amnesty will only be applicable to those individuals that owe the taxes, not to those individuals that may have payment plans already and that are ongoing, that may include payment of interest, and that they're now going to be able to accelerate that, waive the interest, and have those been factored into the original revenue projections? And now, is there a discount for that possibility?
On the amnesty, you're talking about the interest and penalties? I, well, I believe the program allows, I think it didn't specify any year, so it could be any year. And whatever is outstanding during the amnesty period, they can basically come in and actually pay it. If they're under a payment plan and they come up with a principal, they can come in actually and pay it.
So most of the payment plans include the payment, the interest and penalties, right?
Right.
It's just that it's a compliance, the guy comes in.
I guess it's a running figure, in other words.
Right, and you know, they don't have the cash upfront, or they can't go borrow it, so they enter into a payment plan. And then interest and penalty is part of that payment plan. Now, are you going to allow these individuals then, which would, I think, would only be fair, that if, for example, they have, they're in an 18-month or two-year payment plan, and so the balance of, and they're in month six, so the remaining 18 months of payments could be accelerated under the amnesty, and you would give them the same opportunity to make the principal payment and waive their interest and penalty even though they've had a payment plan?
I believe it's open to all. The only one that I have to check with our staff is if you're under criminal investigation.
Well, yeah, that would be, this is...
That would be different.
To avoid criminal, and so you just want, you know, this is to accelerate the voluntary compliance, and in consideration for that acceleration, you know, you'd waive the interest and penalty. But I would just like to see that that be something that you consider, because, you know, we want to be fair, we want to be even more fair to these individuals who've actually made the effort to come in there, acknowledge, you know, their sins almost, pay for them even though it's on a scheduled basis, and, you know, not everybody's the prodigal son where they come in and we hold our hands open and the son who's been there all along tilling the fields, you know, we're going to continue to punish him. I think that if we're going to forgive one, we need to forgive the other to ensure that it's as fair as we can get. You know, it's never going to be equal, but it's going to be as fair as we can get, and I'd like to just, you know, have you consider that. And given that, I'd like to move to accept section one. I think the Chair is objecting to that motion, so I withdraw that motion.
The motion is not advanced.
Can I take a one-minute recess? I did something, the Clerk of the Legislature...
There's a, the senior senator was recognized, so just a minute.
Okay, just one, oh, clarification. On the amnesty, Art, how long would you allow the amnesty to what date? June 26, 2007.
Right.
Okay, and you're talking about only...
Three months.
Three months from now? Okay, what about on a scenario like this? We're talking about maybe 17 days, 18 days from now, April 15 comes, and I don't have the money to pay, and so that means I have recess up to June 26 to pay off, you know, whatever I owe, and I'll be absolved as far as, you know, the interest and penalty, because as of April 15 next month, that's when you're supposed to be receiving a lot of payments, right? Why would anybody pay on April 15 when there'll be absolved and they don't have to pay penalty and interest until June 26? Are you following me?
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
So that's why, are you going to be putting a condition in terms of the amnesty whereby withholding taxes of 2006 will, you know, will not be a part of the amnesty, is going to be 2005 and back, that the amnesty will be allowed, right?
That, when we met and I met with my staff, and it applies also to real property tax, it was supposed to be for 2005 and prior.
Yes, but I understand that you're now actually implementing this?
Which, the amnesty?
The amnesty or not yet?
Yes, it started June, May, March 26, I believe.
But do you understand what I'm saying, though? If, you know, everybody should be paying by April 15. We were supposed to be flooded with payment of withholding and I, we, you have mentioned earlier that people are, you know, bringing up their exemption more than before, and so, so what's the plan?
I know we discussed that with our staff, even for the real property, everything should be 2005 and prior years as well as the income tax, but we wish, I have to apologize with the Director and myself, we were busy, and these things came up, and we're going to try and rectify that problem on trying to make it basically 2005 and prior years.
Okay, how do you go about in doing this? Does it mean that the Governor would have to approve it, or only the Director of Revenue and Tax would approve it?
You're talking about the particular year, the amnesty?
Yes, who actually gives that authorization?
Actually, for the income tax, basically, it's the Governor who delegates his authority down to the tax commissioner.
Or the tax commissioner, and the tax commissioner is?
Is Art Loggins.
Art Loggins, and so I would assume that there is a written document stating as of March of this year that, you know, amnesty begins, and it goes all the way up to June 26, right? And you would have a date of who would be included in terms of the amnesty? Do you know what I'm saying? The order will include people that are filing that, you know, in the past, and the people that will be filing on April 15, 2007, for 2006?
That was in our discussion with my staff when we discussed the tax amnesty. I did make it clear to them that it should be for prior years for amounts that have been assessed on the books, and we're trying to collect on it. So these people are not filed and assessed, so they're not figured in into the numbers.
But what I'm saying, Art, is that it has to be in writing, and what you have in writing right now is the Bible, you know, what Moses brought down from the hill.
Yes, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, sir. It's something that wasn't carried out by my staff, writing it down and saying what the tax years are. John and I have been kind of told them to do it, and then we were kind of tied up with a lot of other things.
Yeah, but your signature would have to be there, though, right?
Yes, yes.
Before they start allowing the amnesty. Otherwise, what I'm saying really is that forget about people paying on April 15, because they will, you know, extend themselves to June 26.
That was an intent, but Senator, also, I believe there's a lot of people on how you treat taxpayers for fairness. In other words, why would you give time for people that owe taxes for 2005 to pay their tax up to March 26, I mean, June 26? Then they ask, why can't you give people that owe 2006 that fairness on paying their tax also? Those things probably were brought up to our staff in terms of fairness. I mean, if you owe 2005 liability right now of $10,000, you're making that guy scotch-free from paying taxes, and I mean, interest and penalty, and if somebody were to file and pay their, file their return in for 2006 on April 17, you're not treating the taxpayer the same. So maybe these are the things that were brought up during our absence with the Director on fairness on treating taxpayers.
Oh, yes, I understand what fairness is, and fairness is as of the date that, you know, you put down. Like, what makes you think that June 26 is fair? You know, it's really sort of a judgment call. And so, here we are in a desperate position right now financially, and everybody knows that anybody that made money on 2006, right, as we know, they got to pay by April 15, whatever the balance is. But now you're saying, bringing up questions of morals and questions of fairness, in terms of balancing this budget, I'll be fair, you know, be frank with you, I don't think that we will collect on April 15 then. That's the reason why that I'm asking, you know, you normally would have to put an order out as the Commissioner of Revenue and Tax, and that order would either be you or your destiny. But you're the one being designated by the Governor, right, to do that? And so, I would like to get a copy of that order so that, you know, maybe to be clear and to clarify to the public, really, what do you actually mean by June 26? And if I understand you well, that means the question of fairness, that means that nobody then would pay on April 15. Well, think about it and see what we're going to do, because we're in desperate state right now.
Our original intent with the Director is for prior years, Senator.
Right, but, you know, the, right now it's not a question of intent, it's a question in terms of the implementation, and you already started the implementation of it. And so, under what authorities? Normally, you would have the executive order, right? Normally, also, you give out an order as the Commissioner of Revenue and Tax, under your name. And so, it'd be interesting to see, you know, the order that you put out, and to allow all the corporate income tax amnesty, individual income tax amnesty, withholding tax amnesty, and the gross receipt tax amnesty, and the real property tax amnesty. So, Art, if you don't mind, can I...
Yes, sir, and if we need to correct that, we will correct it, sir.
Yes, but I would surely like to get a copy of your order.
Okay, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Pinkel. Senator Kava?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there's been a lot of talk on amnesty, and whether it's corporate, individual, gross receipts tax, and with that, it kind of follows along to my question, or my comments and question. I've passed out for members of the body, and I've sent a copy out to you, and this is based on a correspondence that I sent to the administration in regards to receivables from the Government of Guam. And I don't know if everyone sees it, it's a cover letter, Department of Revenue and Tax, and then it's from you, Art, and it's subject, "Information requested via letter dated March 22, 2007." Does everybody have that? Okay. I want to turn, everyone turn the page, and Art, maybe you can help me before I ask my question, our questions, if you could just explain for the purposes of information to the members of the body. We have this sheet in front of us, and the second sheet says, on the left side, run date, March 6, 2007, and then the title, of course, is Government of Guam, Department of Revenue and Tax Collection Branch, Monthly Activity Report, Ending February 28, 2007. And then, of course, on the left side, it starts out with Inventory Activity, and then it goes from that Inventory Activity horizontally, there's different columns there, Individual Income Tax, Withholding Tax, Corporate Income Tax, Business Privilege Tax, and then, of course, it goes down, down the line on Referrals. Beginning Inventory, Referrals, Referrals Received 6672, Assess Accruals, Total Inventory, Adjustment Activity, Field Receipts, Offsets, Abatements, Payments to Treasury of Guam, Payment Transfers, Inactivation, Total Adjustments, and Ending Inventory. So there's a number in the top for totals, we're beginning inventory, 94 million, that's in the right side, 94,749,48867, and of course, it shows an Ending Inventory, I guess, in the bottom right-hand side, at 91,453,84118. And in between all that, these numbers are broken down in columns, Individual Income Tax, Withholding Tax, Corporation Income Tax, and Business Privilege Taxes. So if you can, for purposes for the body, before I ask a question, can you kind of give explanation? It says a Beginning Inventory. First of all, for that first page, Beginning Inventory, explain, what is this inventory? When you mean inventory, Beginning Inventory, what does that mean?
This, before we begin, the run date or the beginning date is for February 1, 2007, and the end date is for February 28, 2007, if you see that on the right, on the left side. So this Beginning Inventory is the Beginning Inventory as of February 1, 2007, and it gives all the information or transactions that happened during the month of February. If you want me to go down the line, the Beginning Inventory is the Beginning Inventory for February 1, then referrals that the collection people receive during that particular month, then you go down, Sales Accruals, then the Total Inventory for that month, then you get your adjustments during that month, which is the further down. Then you get your Field Receipt, which is Offsets, Offsets on each individual categories, then Abatement falls in, then you got Payments That Received to Treasury of Guam, Payment Transfers, Inactivation... Payment Transfers, Inactivation Accounts, Total Adjustment. Then you take that from your Total Inventory against all the adjustments, and you get your Ending Inventory for the month.
Oh, I see, so this first sheet shows year-to-date, at least the beginning of the month. Beginning Inventory, then, was the beginning of the month, February 1. That Beginning Inventory of 94,749,488.67. That was the amount owed as of the beginning of the month.
Right.
And then the ending of the month, the ending Inventory there, where it says 91,453,841, that is the Ending Inventory on what, on receivables as of the end of February, correct?
Right.
Okay. And, okay, I see. If you go to the next page, when you have Beginning Inventory there, hold on a sec, let's see. Beginning Inventory, what is Beginning Inventory in the second page?
Just so we're at the same page.
Are we?
You're talking about the beginning for the fiscal year, September 30, ending September 30, 2006?
Yeah, oh, I see. So, in September 2006, the Beginning Inventory for that year was 106,733,114?
That is correct.
And then, the end, is it then, the end of the fiscal year was 114,914,468.61?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so what basically this second report is, is the total receivables from the beginning of the fiscal year to the end of it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so now we go to the next page. When you see the Beginning Inventory of 94,749,488.67, that's not Beginning Inventory for February, is it? Or is it for the beginning of the year?
You're talking about fiscal year '05?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm trying to read these reports, because as we go into the receivables, I want to just get a good understanding of what this is.
You know, if you start going back to September 30, '04, if you go back to that page, and you, there's continuity, if you go to that, if you see the Ending Inventory of 103 million?
Yeah.
You go to the Beginning Fiscal Year '05, and that, you see the same Beginning Inventory for that fiscal year? So it kind of like flows going forward.
103?
Yeah.
So, one, so... Oh, I see, so, let's see. Sure, there you go, that's why I was confused. Let me just go over this one, and I'll start from the old days. Ending, okay, you go to the last page, Ending September 30, 2004. The Ending Inventory was 103,12496.82, correct?
Correct.
Then you go to the next page, Beginning Inventory should be the same, and it is. For Beginning of Fiscal Year '05, it was 103,12496.82, correct?
Correct.
Okay, then, oh, I see. I was confused. Then, in the next page, this is February year-to-date.
That is only for that, for one month.
Ah, so when you say 106, the Ending Inventory as of September 30, 2005 was 106,733,000, correct? And then we go to September 2006, Beginning Inventory, 106,733,114. And then the Ending Inventory for that year was 114,914,468. And then you go to this, the statement up front, is...
That is only for that, for that particular month.
For that particular month, so you can't, for a minute, so this is just the year-to-date, so the Beginning Inventory. So, between the end of the fiscal year, September 30, 2006, and now, as of February 28, receivables have gone down by about 20 million. Correct?
Say that again, Senator.
Well, I'm just saying, if you, total receivables. Your receivables as of September 30, 2006 was 114,914,468.61, correct?
Correct.
And now, five months through the fiscal year, actually, no, not five months, at the end of the fiscal, at the end of February, your receivables is 91,453,841.18, correct?
Correct.
Which means is, five months into the fiscal year, our receivables have gone from 114 million down to 91,453. So, 91... Right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Then... These are, are these, are these current year, these are...
These are all, these are all that's in the receivable.
Now, receivables wouldn't be for this fiscal year.
Go back 10 years, 10 years ago.
Yeah, but that's another thing I want to ask about, about income, when you have revenues. I want to be very clear in this, when you, when I see this, right now, we have a receivable of 91 million as of end of February, of 91,453,841.18. Now, with this receivable, this would be for prior year, correct? It would not be for the current year?
It's whatever's assessed. I mean, if a 2006 is filed a month ago, and they make the assessment, and it's not paid, then it goes into the receivables, yes.
Okay, but how would you treat, so I just want to be very careful. If, if you're going to have a income tax amnesty, and that's counted as a revenue, if it was for the prior fiscal year, that would be booked as receivable, correct, right?
It, like I said...
I'm just going, I know, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
And if it's due and it's unpaid, it's a receivable.
Okay, if it's due and unpaid, but...
So, in other words, if somebody filed a, if it's GRT, it could be last month's GRT, and it should, it'll be included in here, if it's unpaid.
If it's, okay. That's why I'm wondering, if you have a certain year that you're going to collect corporate, individual income taxes, and, you know, you've already set a certain projection of how much you're going to collect on taxes. Now, this is for this particular fiscal year. And, by the way, please, my apologies for being a little bit slow on this thing. I'm just used to, in the private sector side, if I'm going to, if I'm going to do an amnesty, and I have receivables, you know, going back '30, '60, '90, then, of course, you have the fiscal year, but then I have prior year, and these are things that you kept on your books as a receivable from prior year. If I booked a certain revenue, and I'm saying, okay, in this given year, I'm going to make so, certain amount of, I'm projecting, and I'm not talking cashier, I'm projecting a certain type of revenue. And in that revenue, you have cash sales, and you have charge sales. Now, obviously, charge sales, if it was for this fiscal year, and let's say my policy is only 30 days, and these guys are 120 days, but it's still this fiscal year, when there's a payment on that, and I, let's say, man, I'm going to give up, you're not going to pay, if you pay this bill that is 180 days past due, you pay it up, and I'm going to forgive you all the interest on that, on that bill, but you got to pay it up. Now, when he pays it, and that cash payment is made, that goes from a receivable, and there was a sale, there were cash sales, and there were charge sales, and revenues don't change. It, you know, the, they're just, for this particular fiscal year, there's a payment made, and I lost the interest, but heck, it went along with what my total sales are. But if there's a sale from a previous year, I may have even written it off. And, you know, if there was something like two years off, and the auditors are getting on me, I say, okay, we, you know, we had allowance for doubtful counts, blah, blah, blah. We write it off, it went above the doubtful counts, we write it off. And if it was written off, you know, there could be, you know, I could see that this is a revenue that has not been taken into consideration. So, you know, and if it was written off, then it could quite conceivably be considered revenue. And when I look at this thing, and this is the question I just want to be very clear on, when I see these receivables, and I'm wondering whether this is a receivable for this year, or the year before, or the year before that, when you put this revenue projection in here, what was your, your lit, I mean, what was your definition of what is new revenue? As well, I conceive it, it was unaccounted-for revenue from a prior year that's been, or it's, it's something that was already taken to account for this fiscal year, and because as a result of the amnesty, they're paying, and with their paying, then it really wouldn't be a revenue. It would be just paying on a current projection. And I don't know if I asked it the right way.
I think so, I think that's the problem the auditors have in terms of, and that's the problem we have when we allow you to carry forward lapse appropriations. Because what happens is, those revenues really can't be re-appropriated, shouldn't be re-appropriated, because they, we already appropriated them in the prior year. So we are almost double appropriating when we do that, because we appropriated the money, we didn't collect it, then we allow you to carry forward again, spend it once more in terms of spending authority, and that's what increases the deficit. So, you know, we're really just playing with cashier, and the books have to be cleaned up sooner or later. But what is happening here is, for example, when we're collecting the amnesty, and we're collecting from tax year 2004, in theory, in actuality, we've already spent that money. Because what we did was, we encumbered the appropriation, we spent it, we didn't pay it, and then when we collected it later, we still encumbered against that same cash that we collected, and that's what's been driving our deficit. So, you know, I think we need, I don't think we need to do that, because really, all we're trying to figure out is the cashier to support the operations. But from the accounting perspective, that really is one of the, the really driving forces behind our deficit, is when we do these kind of things.
And that's why, you know, I'm just a little bit confused, because I want to be very clear. Obviously, there's a cash flow crisis, you know, there is, from the government, the administration standpoint, there's a cash flow issue right now with the government of Guam, making, you know, public schools have not been, you know, they're making their net payroll. And I'm hearing also that there's possibility that, right now, even with the rest of the government of Guam, the cash flows is so tight, that, you know, there's an issue now with the rest of the agencies of government of Guam. But when that PowerPoint presentation was made several weeks ago, was going to be made, it was, and when the number at 434 was shown, it was a cash and analysis report, where there's cash in and cash out. And that's where my concern is, is as we've gone in some of these numbers, I'm seeing cash flows, and I'm seeing revenue, cash flows in, cash flows out, and then I see revenues and expenditures, and sometimes they're confused, and they're intertwined. And it's, actually, I'm confused too. I do want to state from the record, I know that the administration, the governor made a point in a meeting earlier today, to say that Calvo, Senator Calvo, was stuck on a, on 450. No, no, I'm, though I'm tracking at 450, I, obviously, the administration in the beginning of the year gave, came to us with a 400, it was a governor that came to us with a $457 million figure. We worked at it, we wanted to be a little bit more conservative, so we went down to 456. But the legislature adopted, not unanimously, I see Senator Cruz up there, but the legislature adopted a 456 number. Now, obviously, you know, my office is tracking some numbers, the administration is tracking some numbers. And you know what? Whether there is a confusion between cash flow and revenue, I'm willing to be very conservative, I'm not stuck on any number. As we move along these revenue sides, I'm concerned, because I see some confusion from the standpoint of the administration, that I may, I may, I'm starting, I'm having the assumption here, and it's an assumption, that there's even confusion in the administration between what's the difference between cash flow and revenues. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not there on a day-to-day basis, but I've seen it in the documents you've given to us. But as we go over these revenue projections, I'm going to be, you know, as long as the administration folks can show us with confidence that the numbers you're providing us in this revised statement, there's a believability, and, you know, obviously, you can't predict 100% the future, but if you, if there's enough of empirical evidence to show, or, you know, evidence to show that, moving forward, that there will be this conservative number, I'm all for it. I'm just going to qualify it, that, again, there was some confusion earlier, because if you look at revenues coming into the government of Guam, we, and I'm going to go just on the facts, on numbers, gross receipts tax are up by 9% from the prior fiscal year. Corporate income tax is up from the prior fiscal year by 11%. Individual income tax collections, the fiscal year as compared to the past fiscal year, are up by 31%. Withholding tax is up barely, but it's up barely at 100, by 190,000. I can't, you know, this is a lot of subjectivity. Just as I was going along with the, with your understanding on withholding taxes, there has been several assumptions made by the administration that there will be this, and I call it a collapse, because of the first five months, you're looking at an increase of almost 200,000, and then between now and the end of the fiscal year, you're dropping by nearly nine and a half million from what was collected the year before. It is a collapse, and it actually, there's a concern I have on that, because if you're showing this collapse, all the trends are showing that the economy is starting to grow. But if you have something there that shows that, all of a sudden, gross receipts tax, withholding tax, these are going to be sharp declines, I'm, I want to be conservative, that's the best way to do it. The thing is, whatever we determine here, obviously, when we get to the expenditure side, the governor and the administration has been spending, and the governor said it himself, he's spending at a, the governor of Guam has authorized a spending of $480 million. And BBMR, obviously, has agreed with him, and are spending at the 480 million clip. Whatever we arrive at, 430, 450, let's go down, 430, that's what, if you guys can show these numbers are viable. But the main issue here is, the administration has got to recognize that they've been overspending, and they've got, the governor's got to use his authority, the governor is a governor. He could just, right now, through executive order, through BBMR, say, hey, go to all of us, say, God, this is bad. And this is my, this is what we need to do. And if we're going to cut, cut 10%, and then tell us, and so we can plan for it. But that's been the problem, because I'm talking, I talk to Dave O'Brien sometimes, or from UOG, UOG Judiciary, Legislature, Guam Public School System. You have Guam Public School System that we appropriated 172 million. They're short by 19 million, is what they should be getting by now. So they're below the appropriation, they're at 40% of, they're at about 70%, 70-some percent of what they should be getting. The legislature, we're getting half of what we should be getting at this time. Poor UOG, some of those UOG allotments are at 11% halfway through the fiscal year. Of course, there's BBMR, BBMR's at 80%. So, the administration has already set spending practices and priorities, and some agencies are going to get much lower than what was appropriated. Some agencies are going to get by far more than what they were appropriated, because we're only halfway through the fiscal year, and they're getting 80 to 100%. But I just want to be very clear with the administration, I'm going to be conservative. And as we go through the numbers on the revenue side, I just want to make sure that we avoid the difference between revenues and cash flow. And as we start talking about the other areas, about expenditures, we'll take a look at where spending has been, and what needs to be done to adjust. When it comes to cash flow... When it comes to cash flow, that's what I'm talking about, when you come about amnesty, if the amnesty is, would it be treated as a revenue, or would it be considered as a cash flow? Obviously, we get into the borrowing portion of this thing, borrowing should not be, and that cash that comes in, that's cash flow. It will have an impact later on in revenue, because if we tie in Section 30 monies, whatever we tie it into, it's gonna have an impact on revenue. So again, that, that's my question to Art, is when we take a look at, at, at these, these amnesties, and we take a look at it, I'm, I'm wondering, are we looking at cash, or are we, or are we looking at, at actual revenues? And if, if it is revenues, we're in the right area, but if it ain't revenues, if it's cash, then, you know, it, it may not even have to, it shouldn't be here. Anyway, that's my comments, particular into this particular area. But maybe, again, you can give an explanation on this sheet, on if this, is this is right to be revenue, or, or should it be cash?
Just for clarification, from an audit standpoint, I think if they're counted as revenues as they're collected, so we would book them as revenues, even if they're prior years.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Luhon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I've been adding some numbers here and stuff, and let me, let me get this straight. I want to make sure that we're dealing with this, these numbers that are reflective on the star, right, Mr. Chairman? The star?
That is my understanding.
And as well as this new sheet here, with the transmittal from the governor's office, the legal counsel, right?
Which was adopted earlier.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Got a correction there. Now, you know, I need clarification, because I'm adding these numbers here in regards to the general fund total, and that's on the, I guess, the third sheet, where it comes to the very bottom line, 07, general fund total, when you come 07, starts with 31.7, 28.7, and so on, so forth, okay? Now, when we come to the total, the grand, well, actually, the total there, 72-502-331, okay? Now, that's inclusive of the $25 million amnesty in, in this, this page from the legal counsel transmittal, right? If I'm not mistaken? Okay? Now, if we do that, if you, if you, if you add those numbers, inclusive of the $25 million amnesty, okay? That number wouldn't come up to 472-502-331. That number will come to 472-447-332. When you add on the $5 million amnesty, and real estate amnesty, that true number, actually, that number will come up to 477-477-332. So actually, this number, your 447-502-331, is off by 24,999. If you want to take a little recess to add it up, and, again, that's what I'm saying about, about numbers. Mr. Chair?
I mean, unless my calculator is off, but it's a Sharp brand, so it's gotta be pretty sharp.
It's pretty sharp.
Pretty sharp.
All right, we'll go ahead and give a minute for the, the administration to put together the numbers. Can we hold me in recess? It's been brought to our attention by the administration officials that they need to attend a 4 o'clock meeting. Mr. Loggins, if you want to go ahead and speak on there real quick?
We have, John and I have a, kind of like, an important meeting on the, our attorney with some issues that we need, that we need to take care of, so I'm asking if you can excuse me for like, an hour or so, and I'll, I'll be back.
Okay, so, is there a motion by the body? Any member of the body? Okay, so a motion by Senator Calvo to go ahead and break until 5:00 PM? No objection? All right, so move, we'll be in recess till 5:00 PM.
Again, some of my concern, the concerns I brought up earlier today, was, again, in the issues on receivables, and how the administration would treat a receivable, and would a receivable be considered income, or revenue, or cash, and depending on when that cutoff date was. Just for the record, again, when is considered a cutoff, and I'll give you an example, of a GRT for the first quarter of this fiscal year, and GRT for the second quarter, payment is delayed, and late. And so, again, we're, we're now, you know, we're having this GRT amnesty. Now, with the GRT amnesty in effect, and that, that business that was owing GRT for the first quarter, they pay, they pay up as a result of this amnesty, and its current year, would, would the, when you, when you receive that, that cash in, would that be part of this GRT tax amnesty? Or would that be just considered cash, and it should not be included in as, as revenues? I just want to get clarification on that particular.
I believe when, when you-
Sorry, Art, can you get closer to the mic?
I believe when you receive cash payments for taxes, I, I think it's considered revenues for that year. That's my belief, that's what I, I'm understanding from an accounting-
And actually, Art, you know, that's why you're, you're revving tax, and that's why I'm, I know, I note here, that in the creation of a budget, like, this revised budget, you mentioned BBMR, is, are the folks that created this revised budget, correct? I think that was a statement made earlier. So this is BM, obviously, BBMR created this revised budget, didn't they?
Actually, the budget was written by the fiscal team in-
A fiscal team?
Yeah.
But again, with the role, is BBMR included? Because usually, the role of BBMR is, is, again, a creation of a budget.
Yeah, because of the short time that was, that we had to get it done, it was the entire fiscal team that sat and-
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Sure, oh.
Senator Pangolino?
On the question, on the question of, for example, the, the revenues from the tax amnesty, or revenues from other fiscal years, that is the possibility of being realized with, like, the tax amnesty. Taxpayer comes in for tax, taxes owed in, in 19, or 2004, comes in this year and pays it for this fiscal year, it is booked as revenues for this fiscal year. However, you know, in, 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 you're not allowed, or you're not supposed to, then appropriate that money to cover the operations of this fiscal year, because that money has already been appropriated in prior fiscal years. And that's exactly why we have the deficit, because we said we were gonna collect 450 million in taxes, we only collected 425, we budgeted 450, and, and, because, and we, because we didn't collect that 25. We then, you know, for that fiscal, we, but we appropriated 450, and we encumbered 450. So we have a $25 million deficit. The next year, we collect some of that 25, we add it to that fiscal year, but we appropriated, you can't appropriate that again, it has to cover that prior year obligation, which is the retirement of the deficit. So, that's, that's really one of the dilemmas, I think, we have in this budget. It's sure we realize the cash, but we really can't appropriate it, and we should not appropriate it if we're going to follow, you know, accounting regulations and the government regu, and government accounting regulations. So that's a real crux here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, the, the, the former speaker has a good point, and that's the whole issue I have, again, with BBMR not here, there's been a creation of a budget, the original budget, and, and of course, you know, BBMR with Mr. Bredalio, over the past four, four years, there's been these budgets that have been created, and, and a little bit of my concern is, is when I see these revised numbers, the actual, there were certain statements made over the past several weeks, and let me state for the record, I am perfectly willing to go, and I want to be conservative, the governor mentioned that I'm, that there might be concern about myself, or any other senator here, going towards a number such as 434. No way, I'm, I'm, now's the time to be safe, and we'll be, I'll be conservative. The thing is, I'm, I'm just trying to get an understanding, as I'm moving along, and I'm seeing, and I ask questions in regards to receivables, and whether they're cash, or whether they're revenues. I, I do know that, again, the original budget that was submitted to us, it was, I was working with Carlos Bredalio, and Joey Calvo, the BBMR group was the ones that were working with George Bamba, together in, in coming up with revenue projections and a budget. And then over the past few weeks, again, Mr. Bredalio makes a public statement, at one week, at 447 million, and then he makes another statement the next week, at 434 million. We had that PowerPoint presentation that was planned to be, provided to the members of the body, the oversight hearing, and I provided a copy to all the members of the legislative body on the PowerPoint presentation, that this was, actually, this was Carlos Bredalio and BBMR. And if you take a look at their, their, I would guess, this was their cash report, and this is, in their PowerPoint, it was fiscal year 2007, general fund cash analysis, and then it says, in a certain grouping, cash in, and it says 456 million, fiscal year '07, general fund adopted revenues, and then it subtracts 22 million, and that subtract, and that subtraction of 22 million says projected FY '07 revenue shortfall, and then it goes to a grand total for cash, and this is cash analysis, at $434 million cash in for FY 2007. And then it goes also, in the second area, where it goes cash out, and then it gives 456 for appropriations, 25 million for unfunded continuing appropriations, and then 15 million for miscellaneous fund sources for 25 support departments, with a grand total of 496 million cash out. And then it says a cash gap, and then it, of course, it takes the 434 million that we should anticipate coming in, in cash, and then it subtracts 496 million in cash out, and it shows a, a $62 million shortfall in cash. Now, the reason why I'm, I'm concerned, and that is why I, I wish that BBMR were here, since either the folks that start, that created a lot of these budgets, and they are, of course, now stating that 434 million is the, is the anticipated revenue, is that because if you're talking in a cash basis, you know, that could be very scary, you know why? Because obviously, when you're taking in cash, and you know that, Art, remember the reserve? Even when you, when you take in revenues, in the, in the, in the revenues of the government of Guam, you're supposed, that's a net, and you're supposed to take out that 68 or 75 million dollars in, as, as reserve, so it should never be counted as, as revenues. And yet, if you look at this cash analysis report, it's a cash flow report, or a cash position report, it is, for some reason, it's identical to what now the numbers that the administration are saying is on revenues at 434. And you know, that's, and I'm, I'm not trying to be, and Art, I don't blame you, you're revving tax. John, you're not BBMR, and neither John. Ray Tenorio, my, my good friend, and, you know, and chairman colleague, you're not BBMR. But when you, when you see Fundamental Economics 101, when it, when you, when you confuse the revenues, a budget, a budget, and cash flow, you can see where, there's a lot of intrepidation in my part on where we're at right now. And as I start asking questions on gross receipts tax, I can see it's quite coincidental that, and remember that's, the long, the long sheet that was a day before? We had two long sheets, and then this one, the correction? Well, that long sheet you mentioned earlier was a cash, that's what you were mentioning, is about a cash flow, and a cash flow projection. And, and that's what I'm, I'm so concerned about, because if it is cash flow in a 434 million, that's bad. I mean, that means the $75 million that you shouldn't have taken in consideration in cash, has been taken into consideration, so we're, we're even a worse shape than I thought we were. But I, I'm just thinking, maybe there's a confusion here. And obviously, if 434 million dollars is, is what the BBMR thinks is what cash in for a year, and it's exactly identical to 434 million in revenues, holy smokes! I think that's the first time ever, 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 where you have cash flow is identical to revenues. And that's why even this little, it started with the receivables, because it puts into question my under, my understanding of how budgeting should work, and how cash flow works, and maybe not my question of how it works, but maybe BBMR's understanding of how cash flow and revenues and budgets work. So you understand why I'm, at this point, very, very nervous about where we're heading for. But anyway, those are, I, they're not here, so, again, obviously, you have a fiscal policy team now, and we had, like I said, I have a lot of respect for you, Art, and, and John, and John, and, so we'll continue on, but again, you can see, obviously, there is something odd about some of the, the, the numbers that have been coming from the administration. The, in fact, we were gonna go into provision for tax refund and EITC, I don't, I might as well start it up on the provision for tax refund and EITC. Actually, why don't we hold off? No, that's, that's for another one. That's all I have to say at this point.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and, if you're completed, then we'll go back to the original, Senator who had the floor, Senator Luhon, with respect to the discrepancies. You wanted the administration to look at the calculations?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, yeah, I just wanted clarification, and I didn't, you know, I, in regards to the discrepancy of 24,999, and I, I'm, I'm sure there is somewhere, I didn't catch it, and maybe you can explain that to, to the body in regards to where the discrepancy is at there.
You know, we, we had just discussed this with Senator Tenorio, the spreadsheet is formula-driven, so we've asked them to go back and find out if there was somewhere in there that, that that may have happened.
That's, that's fair, that's fair enough, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Pangolino? Did you want to ask any questions? Okay. All right, at this point, then we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next section. We've gone through individual, and corporate, and withholding. The next section will be provisions for tax refunds. Senator Pinkel?
Yes, I, I just wondered, where do, where do we go from here now? I, I think we have exhausted a lot of questions in terms of- I, I think we have exhausted a lot of questions in terms of the taxes, corporate, individual, withholding, tax refund.
Yeah, just, just for the indulgence of the body, we, we have gone through in sequence here each category, and so I'm just following the next item on that list.
And, and what is that, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
The provision for tax refunds. If anybody has any questions on that? Just a moment, Senator Guthers.
You know, after, after this, of course, we, we know what the provision is for tax refund. It's more than 68 million then, right? Because, or is this taken into conserv, into consideration all the tax refunds for 2005,
I guess the, the provision for refunds for all seven would consider basically the 2006 tax year.
Tax year, so we, we still sort of, we'll be coming back in terms of did borrowing aspect to pay off the tax refund on top of the 68 million dollars, 68.8? You know, to, to, to balance it out, because you, you're, it's existing here that 68.8 million dollars would satisfy the 2006 tax refund. But yet, we have not satisfied 2005, 4 and 3 yet.
That, that is true.
And so we, we need to, where, where would you get that money now? You know, to, since we're talking about this budget, or are we going to use the 68.8 to cover the 60, you know, 2003, 2004, 2005?
Actually, the, the law for the provision refunds requires that they, they put aside, aside funds for the 2006 tax year. I guess what's happening right now is whatever they put aside, they, they use for refunds. And in addition to that, we're required under the EIC settlement to put 15% aside from whatever we, we put aside for the income tax reserve fund.
I, I, I know that what you're saying is on the other provision of the bill itself, which is the rainy day fund, right? That will be, you know, to set aside that 15%?
No, this is strictly to, to fund the prior year's EIT settlement. The, the 90 million dollar settlement. Part of the settlement calls for to, to put aside 15% of the, from the income tax reserve fund. So every time, for example, if we have for a month, five, $5 million, we, we are supposed to put aside 15% of that.
Well, John and Art, you have a lot of act to do here. You know, just to, to, to really balance this thing out, because now we're in a very difficult times right now, and we're, we got, what we got to do, we got to do. But I think, you know, the, what you're saying is a little bit hard to do, to put 15% aside on anything at this moment in time. And so, you know, I'm just looking at more in the practical point of view in terms of, you know, the tax refund, the provision for tax refund. Maybe throughout this discussion, right, you know, later on, we will be able to come out with something exact in terms of how we'll be able to satisfy the, you know, the other years, e- even though your explanation about 15%, John, this is where the, you know, the director of the Bureau of Budget would have to come in, because like you, we only do the collection, and we understand that. But on other sides of the figures, a lot of it has to be explained by the juggling act that will come about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Pangolinan? I'm sorry, Senator Guthers, and then Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the subject of tax refunds, I'd also like to look at tax refunds and for a moment, even the EITC monies. Now, Mr. Loggins, about a week ago, you made a public statement that the Department of Revenue and Taxation would be issuing the first $10 million in earned income tax credits to eligible recipients. And this is for, if I, if I'm not mistaken, tax years, was it 94, 95?
97 and 98.
Oh, 97 and 98, okay. Now, after you make the initial releases, how much are we going to have to pay out for subsequent years covered by the class action order? Do you have any idea?
I believe the total is 90 total, and then when you subtract the 10, it becomes 80.
So we'll still owe about 80 million dollars. When do you plan or anticipate paying out the remainder of those credits, the 80 million dollars?
I believe in the settlement agreement, it's spread out over probably about eight years. And what we do is we take 15% of the refunds that we're supposed to refund, put it aside for EIC, and then we pay the, the remaining. So when they figured it out, I believe it was over eight years before we finished paying out.
About an eight-year period. Now that the government of Guam really has acknowledged its responsibility to pay out the EITC, will we be able to, or will we be liable also to pay out for years 2006 and perhaps even 2007 and thereafter?
It's part of the tax return now. Before, in the past, we, we blocked it out, so we didn't allow taxpayers to, to file those numbers. And in the settle, settlement agreement, we, we agreed that the 2005 and forward, we would start just including it in the tax return.
Okay. Now, with reference to tax refunds, how much do we owe for 2005? What's the total amount? I know you have that figure.
For tax year 1995, about, 2005, it's about 46, 47,000 dollars, million, million dollars.
Okay, that's what we owe for 2005. How about, how much have we actually paid out to date for 2005?
About 30.2 million dollars.
Okay, that's what we paid out. So what would be the outstanding balance for 2005?
It's about 47.
That's a lot of money. How much is still owed for tax year 2004 in tax refunds?
About 16.8 million.
16.8. And how about tax year 2003? How much is owed for tax refunds?
2003 and prior years is about 9, 9 million.
So we still owe money for 2000 year and prior years?
Yes, we do.
Except for the EITC, how much is still owed just specifically for year 2002 in tax refunds?
We would have to get back to you on, on all the prior years. We just, no, no, this is for income tax refunds.
Okay.
I don't have that figure with me, ma'am.
Okay. Would you know what is the total amount of money that the government of Guam still owes for tax refunds inclusive of 2005 and previous years?
Total for 2005 and prior years, we have about 133.7 million dollars, not including interest.
My goodness. Does this figure include refunds owed to corporate taxpayers?
It does.
Or just individuals?
It's everybody, corporate and individuals.
Is the government of Guam responsible for paying interest on all of these tax refunds?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, yeah. I think it's on. What, what do you believe is the applicable interest rate for all these past due refunds?
It, it varies. I believe the, the interest now for, for refunds is, is 8%. 8%.
8%. And so if you take that figure, 8%, and you apply it to the balance it's owed up to and including year 2005 and earlier, how much interest is the government of Guam going to owe to all these taxpayers who have yet to receive their tax refunds?
This is, is, is an estimate. We have two estimates, ones that are processed and ones that are not filed. So we estimate to be about 40 million.
40 million. So the government of Guam will owe approximately 40 million dollars in just interest payments?
Yes.
To these taxpayers?
Let me, let me qualify these figures. One, there's, there's two figures that, that build up the, the entire liability for, for refund. One is based on refunds that are actually filed and processed, and the other side is the ones that we anticipate to be filed, which is the unfilled portion. So we, we will look at that also.
Okay. Now, how much in tax refunds have you actually paid out since the beginning of this fiscal
As of March 12, 07, roughly, or 22.1 million dollars.
Okay. Now, the reason I asked all these questions is to lead us to this particular point, and I will ask for a response from you. If the government of Guam owes all of this money to our people in the form of tax refunds and EITC payments, why are you proposing in the governor's plan to decrease the provisions for these tax refunds and EITC payments? I don't see you setting aside a lot of money to meet these obligations. Can you please explain why?
It, it goes back, maybe, maybe as far as back as, as maybe four fiscal years. Back, back in, in, I believe, in 2001, 2, 3 and 4 fiscal years, 2001, fiscal year 2002 and fiscal year 2003, we were basically having the provision refunds at 72 million dollars. We, we looked at the, the provisions for refunds account, and, and, and we, we forgot that the rates were really going down, the withholding rates. So in other words, when the withholding rates go down, you're going to expect less withholding tax, and, and we didn't really adjust. So what happened in, in two fiscal years, I believe it's, it's fiscal year four and five, they made an adjustment entry that was converted to revenue because we overstated our provisions for refunds for, for, for those fixed fiscal years. And, and part of that consideration, the fiscal team looked at it and says, maybe we're just paying too much, we're putting aside too much refunds at, at this point in time.
Well, in, in looking at this, I have to say that what I interpret in the governor's bill and the information that you've provided, the numbers that you're providing, is in fact a significant decrease in the amount of money that's going to be available to pay tax refunds and EITC payments. I am very concerned about it. Although you're saying that because of the changes that people are making and they're withholding taxes, that you may not have to accumulate as much money as you had originally thought to meet this obligation, I see it very differently because of the figures you just presented. The millions and millions and millions of dollars that are owed in tax refunds, the millions and millions of dollars that are owed in EITC payments, the millions and millions and millions of dollars that are owed just in interest to taxpayers waiting for their refunds. And I do not see in this bill a realistic recognition that this cannot be a non-priority, because to our people, it is a big priority. Frankly, I'm surprised that they've been so patient all these years in waiting for their refunds. So I bring that to your attention because I think it perhaps will be a concern of other senators here as well. And we're just not seeing recognition as to how much of a priority really this should be in meeting this obligation to our taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Senator Ben, Pangolinan?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, this provision for refund issue is, to me, it's, it's a little bit, number one, I'm, I'm disturbed about that because I agree that, that given the historical data, and I see, given the historical set of sites and, and for here, the historical payments that I see, I see the year in which we adjusted the provision for refunds and went from 60, 65, 55. Those are the fiscal years 99, 2000 and 2001. But then we went right back up in terms of actual payments made. I'm assuming that these are actual payments, and I'm also assuming that this provision for refunds were for that current fiscal year and not for prior year refund payments. So immediately after we made those adjustments, we, we went back and made adjustments again for fiscal year 2002, 2003, 2004, and their actual payments became without EITC, because there were no EITC payments in these years. We went back up to 70, 71, 72, 71, 72. And now we're decreasing it back to 68 with the provision for current year EITC of an additional 20 to 25 million, based upon the experience of what has been filed and claims filed for EITC. So instead of increasing it, we're decreasing it, and even with the reduction in the withholding and therefore a reduction, corresponding reduction, although not dollar-for-dollar reduction, in refunds due then at the end of the fiscal year, that it, it, it does not, I would not think that it would account for, given this 71 and 70 million dollar payments in the prior four, five fiscal years. The other thing that is with regards to refunds is that the refunds are not part of the operating budget, basically. In other words, when we say that our revenue forecast is 434 or 435, we really mean 434 plus 72 million with that set aside, because we already took that set aside out before we developed the operating budget. And so it really, that, that number shouldn't adjust the operating bu, shouldn't account for an adjustment in the operating budget, you know, except for like, like you say, when we have the shortfalls in the cash, if we set it aside at the beginning, which we don't. So the shortfall in terms of for, to meet the obligations of the government inclusive of the income tax refunds is much greater than this 34 million, 62 million dollar shortfall. Add another 30 million to that, because we're only setting aside, or 20 million, we're only setting aside three to five, three to four million of the 72 that we said we're taking off the top. said we're taking off the top, and we did not appropriate for the operational requirements of the government. So in effect, we're not only borrowing the thirty million in the line of credit here to meet current operating requirements, we're borrowing another twenty-five million by not paying the income tax refunds. So when you factor those realities into the picture, it really paints, you know, the solution is much more drastic, I think, in terms of what we need to do in order of looking at the cost structure of the government. And I just want that to be upfront, you know. I don't want to put, to say that we're only need this much because we are, by this plan, in effect, saying to the people of Guam, we're gonna borrow your income tax refunds, and we're gonna borrow thirty million of that and stand in line. So I really think that we need to take a look at this. And I know that the plan was that we would retire this income tax refund with a bond issue so that we can capitalize that. That's exactly what we did in nineteen ninety-five. You know, the first thing that they did, that happened was we borrowed a hundred and fifteen million dollars to catch up. And given what we've seen occur, I'm amazed that even at payments of seventy, up to seventy million dollars, we've fallen behind, you know. And I don't know what has caused that in order for us to fall behind this much again. I mean, we've done some catching up, I agree, you know, and I think rough taxes to be commended for that. But the reality of the budget that's being presented is not a shortfall of sixty million, but a shortfall of ninety, and we're not telling the people that we're taking, that we're making that up. We've already decided we're gonna borrow that additional thirty from the income tax refund accounts. And given the reduction here, it's another five, six million dollars that we're gonna do. So I don't know how to resolve that issue, but I just want, again, to be transparent and get everything out in the open, I think. And I think that the people have to know that if we pass this, we're exacerbating the weight on the income tax refunds, not accelerating, because they're thinking that we're borrowing money, and therefore they're gonna get their refunds. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Pangalina. Senator Barnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe just one further clarification, and maybe I just need an answer on this one. You know, with that proposed decrease in this provision, does that mean that we're gonna cease paying these refunds? I just, just for the record?
Can you say that again?
With the proposed decrease in the provision as shown herein, does that mean we're gonna stop paying, the government is gonna stop paying refunds?
No, it doesn't mean that. You know, when we first started, we had a big deficit, and we didn't pay the refunds. And that just accumulates, and I think we tried to get the bond to take care of that and fuse cash into the economy and make more money, and then pay our debt that way. And it never happened. And recently, the court said, you know, you gotta do some adjusting to get the bond. And if the bond doesn't happen, then we are gonna have to borrow from the people through refunds.
I think what was earlier said as well was that with the projections, the projections weren't met, that some of the first things that would go was, of course, the refunds and all that, right? So, yeah, yeah, okay. Vice Speaker?
Yeah, thank you very much. Going back to the EITC, the twenty million dollar, twenty million dollars was injected into the reserve, I mean, for the provision for refunds. What, I'm just for recollection, did that start in fiscal year two thousand and six? In oh five, they didn't have, the EITC was not, the twenty, that twenty million dollars, I know for oh six, and I know I had some questions on that too, because I was concerned, we had an income tax reserve amount that had been consistent. But then with the settlement, the twenty million dollars was supposed to be put into, also contained within the provision for refunds. Was that, that was oh six? And just from my recollection, it wasn't oh five, correct? Remember?
I'm trying to remember.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember that event. When was that discussion?
No, I'm just remembering the settlement. That's why BBMR is not here. And if I can recall the questions I had, it was certain things that occurred. Number one, in previous years, the income tax, the provision for income tax refunds was provision for income tax refunds. And then there was a settlement, and remember, and I'm just trying to recall, when BBMR made their, presented the budget, inclusive of that budget was a twenty million dollar settlement as a part of the provision for tax refund. And I know, I know for oh six, that was included. But was it included in oh five?
I think it's oh six.
Oh six.
Yeah, the twenty million.
That's, and I think one of the concerns I, yeah.
But that's for future, that's for two thousand and five, not for the settlement.
Yeah. Okay. But for two thousand and five, the twenty million was put in in two thousand and six?
I believe so.
Yeah. Now, the same with two thousand and seven. There was a book adjustment for fiscal year oh five. Help clarify this for me. And this was a concern that I had. There was, it was a book adjustment that was around seventeen, fifteen to seventeen million dollars. And it was a result of
Overestimating
Overestimating refunds.
Provisions for refunds.
And that was one of the reasons why I was very concerned in, when you came to us at oh six, and I saw nearly a flat, you know, this, I was anticipating twenty million dollars additional to whatever our reserve fund was because of the inclusion of the EITC. And then, that's why I'm just, just getting, I wanna get clarification here. Why was that book entry made of seventeen million? Explain to me. That seventeen million. Was it seventeen million?
Yes, I think it was seventeen million. Basically, we look at the accounts payable on the liabilities for refunds. And then they, we look at all the years, and then we look at all the provisions that were adopted during all those fiscal years. And they looked at the, I guess, DOA looked at their balance, liability on the income tax reserve fund. And they concluded that they need to make an entry to reduce it down.
And was this, this was accepted by the auditors?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last question on the
Speaker?
John O'Dellorsa, if we were to borrow money just to pay off the income tax refunds owed right now, would be around two hundred million dollars, right? Let's say, what would be the interest rate right now for the bond market? Do you know? Or you have any idea?
We don't.
We don't, we don't, I don't know what that number, that
Would it be less, let's say, than eight percent?
If we had borrowed it back in two thousand
No, right now, right now.
Right now?
The line of credit, I think, is a seven point nine, seven point eight, something like that. The last six million dollar line of credit that was
Yeah, but if they were to borrow it on the bond market, let's say, two hundred million dollars.
It'll really depend, but you have your cost of issuance, such as insurance, underwriters' fees, bond council fees. So there's a possibility that you could get something under eight. But given the financial condition of the government, I'm not sure that you could, you'd probably almost break even.
You know, because what disturbed me too, just like everybody else, is, of course, we have put aside all this money every year minus, you know, all the taxes that will be coming about, minus, of course, the sixty-eight million dollars right now. But we're talking about not only sixty-eight million dollars, but we're talking about another two hundred million dollars, or about hundred and seventy million, you know, plus the sixty-eight million. Let's do. And in a way, we are, we have already overestimated, you know, the revenue, or underestimated. Are we talking about three, say, four thirty-four or four thirty-two or less than that? That's what's disturbing me right now, knowing how much we still owe as far as the tax refund. Maybe somebody can give me some explanation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, I
Okay. We put aside provision for tax refund and EITC, sixty-eight point eight million dollars for this year. But we have been doing this every year, okay? And we have not satisfied the payment of all the, you know, two hundred, two thousand and five, two thousand and four, two thousand and three, two thousand and two, and back. And so if, we have already subtracted those things out in the past budget, the amount to be paid, right? John?
Yes, yes.
But yes, but yet we're still paying back. And so as far as the figures are concerned, maybe you can explain to me then, as far as the budget is concerned, is it sixty-eight point eight that you need to put aside, or should you put aside a lot more?
If I recall, when we first tried to do the budget back then, we came before you for the bond, we already had a debt of like a hundred and some, hundred and nine or something like that, from all the other prior years that we had to take care of. So that thing kinda like just lingered. So every time we have cash, we put it aside, we just take it out to pay refunds for the years that we owe. So that's how we took care of the two thousand, two thousand and one, two thousand and two. And we're trying to take care of the four, the five, and the six. As we get cash, we pay it out. So that in and out, if we had the money and we were like even back in two thousand and three, then we would probably only be like even or about twenty, thirty, depending on EICC. EIC was stopped in nineteen ninety-five, and then all the exemptions came on. So, you know, there's that revenue source that we weren't getting because we weren't paying EITC. Now we have to pay EITC. So we gotta find a source to pay, to pay that, either to reversing all those exemptions that were implemented after the EIC was stopped.
I realize that. And what is, you know, sort of compound of my thoughts in terms of everything here, is the amount of balances, you know, balances that needs, that still needs to be paid. And so, you know, even though, let's say, whoever figures, let's say, we look at in terms of the revenue, we're still gonna be doing the same thing again for the next fiscal years, right? And so
Not unless we find money or
Yes, and this is where we, we need some solid figures, you know, or So can I just move for a five minutes recess? For, can I move for a five minutes recess?
Give me the whole of being recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about GRTs. I had some questions on GRTs. Grits. Oh, but if someone wants to talk about the other one, I just wanna talk about grits.
All right. Briefly, Senator Pangalina? On the provision for refunds?
Thank you very much. You know, again, given the conditions and given what we're facing and given the fact that these provisions for refunds really are not part of the operating revenue and so forth, and that we're now facing the EITC as part of it and so forth, I'm gonna move, Mr. Chair, to restore the seventy-five million dollar, six hundred thousand provision for refunds in line twenty-three of the bill instead of the sixty-eight million eight three one three eight nine. So that's a motion to delete the, to restore the seventy-five million, the original provision.
The motion is to restore the provision for tax refunds and EITC to the seventy-five million, six hundred thousand, which was previously stricken on the motion. Senator Cobble?
I'm not gonna say I'm objecting. I just wanna be very careful when we do this because, remember, I brought up a point earlier on today about the adjustment on the, that the auditors made for fiscal year two thousand and five, because it was obvious there's been a big change and the tax refund, actual tax refund billings have been actually going down dramatically. And that's why when I was concerned, when you, the administration originally sent me the budget, and I saw this nearly flat dollar figure when it comes to the provision for tax refunds, and I knew that you were including the twenty million, I say, what's wrong here? But then, of course, what happened was that seventeen million dollar book adjustment. And the only, and the only reason why I'm caution, a little bit cautious here, is because we have to understand there is the issue of cash flow, which is, again, you're talking over a hundred some million, close to two hundred million in prior refunds owed to the people of Guam. And it's, of course, it's a cash flow issue now and paying it. But when you look at a typical budget of revenue, and this is where I was concerned about cash and revenue, and that's why BBMR, I wish they were here, because cash and revenues is completely different. But when you get a, when you see a budget and you look at the revenues, and you see the provision for tax refund and EITC, it is not looking at year, one year before or the year before that, it is for that particular year. And that's why my cautionary note, because there's already, the auditors, and that's why I asked you that question, auditors, if they approve that, and that's what happened, they made that seventeen million dollar adjustment. We have a, we have a long, bad history, and this goes back many years, and that's why we're hundreds of millions of dollars owed in tax refunds. But for fiscal, for the particular fiscal year, there was a reason why, again, that adjustment was made for oh five. And it'd be interesting to see what the audit says in oh six, because if, if we are indeed showing that refunds are at a fifty million clip, and that's what I think what happened, it was about a fifty-two, instead of that seventy some million, it went down to fifty-two based on the audit, then what I'm concerned about, we may have, again, another, because of this particular fiscal year two thousand and seven, and remember my concerns about, about cash and revenues? If we make an adjustment based on this bad history that we have in the future, it may not be a historical, it may not be actually in line with the reality for the particular fiscal year two thousand and seven. And so that's just my cautionary, and I'm not objecting, I'm just saying there's a cautionary note right here. And what I'm worried about, if we do this provision for tax refund and EITC and move it up from sixty-eight million eight thirty-one to seventy-five, not a lot, obviously, it's not a lot, you know, you're talking only five, seven some million, but we may get an issue what happened in fiscal year two thousand and five, where you're gonna get a substantial correction in book entry. So again, I wanna make that note in particular in regard to this particular amendment.
All right. On the motion, as many as are in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. Motion fails.
There's no objection.
I'm sorry?
There's no objection to the motion.
I understand.
There's no request for a roll call.
So there's no, and so on the motion, no objection? It's ordered. We are on gross receipts tax.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go again to the spreadsheet on gross receipts tax. The, again, on the spreadsheet that has been provided, you have, for the first five columns on total gross receipts tax for fiscal year '07, these are the unaudited actuals, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then for the next seven columns, which are for March, April, May, June, July, August, September, those are projections for gross receipts tax that is anticipated for the remainder of the fiscal year. So they're just projections.
That's correct.
Okay. Now let's go to your new amended revenue estimate for fiscal year 2007. On gross receipts tax, the original amount as ratified by the legislature from the original proposal, projection proffered by BB Mar and the administration was at $162,565,341. And you now have a new projection of $171,541,59,000, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now this, I just want to get my lines correct here, excuse me. We adopted, okay, so there's a difference of about, difference about an increase of $8,975,718, which amounts to about a 5.5% increase in gross receipts tax from what we originally adopted beginning of the fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. The, the question I have first of all, with this new number, which is a, an increase of almost $9 million in projected gross receipts tax, is this at 4% in which we, that is the number we originally projected it, or the tax rate that we originally projected at 162? Or is this at 5%? Because I know later on in the bill, you're calling for an increase in the gross receipts tax from 4 to 5%. So my question here is, in the number you have here for gross receipts tax, is that the number, are we looking at apples and apples or apples and oranges? Because the $162,565,341 was based on a 4% rate. The bill, as we go later on in the bill, is at a 5% effective April 1st, which leaves us six more months to, to effectuate, if it were to be ratified, effectuate an increase on the GRT. So can you please explain?
You know, on the old sheet, the way I was looking at it on the old sheet...
I'm sorry, Art, can you get a little closer there? Yeah.
On the old sheet, on this thing that we figured out.
The star sheet?
Yeah, the first, the first one that was destroyed.
Yeah. The only thing I'm worried about, Art, is because we got this new sheet that's in a star. And I just got, I just ripped, I ripped up that old sheet earlier this morning. So...
What my concern was, if you look at the numbers, even on this sheet with the star, you could tell that like in 1999, it was 148. And the trending, in 19, in 2000, it was 146, then 147. Then, of course, you know, those bad years, it went down to 119, 128, 139, 150, 154. Then all of a sudden, it's 171. That was my concern, it was a big draw.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I know, I'm just, you're actually, that's why I'm wondering, you have 171 here. And my question is, is this at 4% from October 1st, 2006, to September 30th, 2007, at 4%? Or is this new adjustment, since we've already gone through the month of February and we're halfway through March and looking at what you intend to do in this bill for the increase in GRT? And I heard our speaker made a solid statement that GRT increase at 5% is not there. So I just want to make sure that we're all in the same page in regards to how you came up with these calculations. So does the number that we have here, is it based that on April 1st and until the end of the fiscal year, it's at 5%?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. So what we're looking at is then, at the spreadsheet, we have year-to-date, October, November, December, January, February. So $13,498,572 is the actuals again. That's the last number where it's actual, that's February, as of February 28th, 2007. But then March, March 2007, obviously, this, the, the tax increase would not take into effect until April 1st. So for March, would it be, it would still be at a 4% clip, correct?
Correct.
And let me just write that down. But then now, come April, from April, May, June, July, August, September. So from May through September, we're at 5%, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you've taken that into consideration. So we have year-to-date as of February 28th, 2007. We have the actual numbers. You're projecting now between, for April at 4% and then May all the way to September at 5%, correct?
Yes.
Okeydokey, we're on the same page. Now let me ask you some questions. If we were to... Because obviously, some senator made a public statement that they may, we may not pass the gross receipts tax increase to 5%. I think that's a wise idea. If we weren't to increase the tax at 5% and it would stay at 4%, what were you projecting the end of the year revenues to be? Well, let me look at the, there was a sheet you had earlier, right? I think it was a sheet earlier. Just help me because I've got so many sheets. Okay. So gross receipts tax, how much did you anticipate for the, if you increase the gross receipts tax starting April 1st to the end of the fiscal year, how much additional revenue would you collect in gross receipts tax as a result of the increase of 4% to 5%?
I believe the increase is 12 million.
12 million, okay. So let me just mental note here. Based on this spreadsheet, you have $171,541,059. You subtract $12 million from that. Where's my calculator? Well, it's 171, 161, 158, right? So if you didn't, if you didn't raise a tax and we went back to 4%, you would project, based on keeping it 4%, 150... What is that, what did I say again? 158 million, 541, 59. Okay. So let's now, I'm trying to go apples and apples. So if you were projecting that all things remaining the same, total gross receipts tax collections for the year would be at $158,541,59, correct? Okay. Let's go into historical data. And these are, again, actuals. Our year-to-date for fiscal year 2007, for gross receipts tax collections are at, we have that somewhere here, but I, it's at $69,469,087, correct? We had all these sheets here and I know I, remember that Department of Administration sheet we had a few days ago, it's here somewhere. But it's, that's what, again, we got, I got from Department of Administration. It's there somewhere, but let me look for it. It's actual year-to-date, February 28th. So as of February 2007, for the first five months of the fiscal year, we're at about $69,469,087. Yeah, it's on the sheet. You don't have it with you, but it's on your sheet. Just say, if it's on the sheet that you provided me from Department of Administration, it's correct. Okay, then it's correct because it's from the sheet from Department of Administration. Actual year-to-date for fiscal year 2006, total gross receipts tax collections were at $64,262,114. And that's, that's correct. Again, that's based on, on the numbers you provided, right? Yeah. Okay, yeah. So with that, year-to-date, there's been an increase of about $5.2 million, five point, yeah, about $5.2 million from the prior year, which equates to almost about eight, eight and a half to almost 9%, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I'm just going to do simple math, simple math. So if you get, and let's just say, you know, things remain the same. Gross receipts tax collections aren't gross receipt tax, but bottom line, they're more consistent. You know, you have your high and low months, but obviously, there, it's more of a consistent barometer of business activity on Guam. So it would not be hard to assume that if you based it on an 8% to 9% clip and we moved forward and we had 100 and, well, we had a total of $154,186. Let me do a quick calculation. 154, 154 times 1.085. If, if we were looking at between 8% to 9%, we would probably hit, if tracking is, I mean, this is just year-to-date tracking, about $168 million, correct? If we were to keep, I mean, just saying, I'm only basing it on my simple math. And my simple math, year-to-date compared to the previous year is that we're up a certain percentage and we're up a certain percentage. If you kept that certain percentage, then we would be around 167, 168, very conservative, correct? Okay. Now, obviously, I don't mind conservatism. The governor mentioned conservatism. The, the gross receipts tax collections that you have, an increase of 25% at 5%, at, for the remainder of the period, would be at $171 million, 171,541,000. If we were to keep the normal percentage increase that we've shown year-to-date from the prior year, we would get about $168 million. If we were to, I mean, that's just all, obviously, this is all subjective, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, looking at your projections from March through the end of the year, you see why I'm a little bit concerned, just because I see this tremendous drop in what we've been trending over the past five months and what you're projecting moving forward. What is the, is there a, give me the explanation as to why you believe that revenues, if we're projecting forward at the current rate now, which would, if we kept it going, go to about 168, 169? And why you believe that the only way to keep it at that level is to raise it to 5%? What is going on in government, in business activity on Guam that you believe that there is going to be a shrinking of the economic activity that would lead you to believe that we're going to have flat growth? There ain't going to be no growth. Whatever gains that we made, whatever gains that we made for the first five months of the year, which is again, close to $5.5 million, that those gains, that's it. We've made our $5.5 million as of the first five months, but for remainder of the fiscal year, there is going to be absolutely no increase in, in revenues from the previous fiscal year, as compared to the previous fiscal year. And the only way for it to stay almost static is to increase GRTs by 25%. Has, I know Gary's not here and he's an economist and these are, you know, these are very important. When you make these certain assumptions, there must be something going on in, in business activity on Guam that would cause you to make this major, major, and my governor meant conservative, conservative, not even conservative, contraction in, in the economic growth that is currently at a certain pace year-to-date. Is there something we, I don't know, or we don't know, that is going to, is the reason for why all of a sudden GRTs are, are going to go at a near-zero rate?
I guess there's different ways to look at it. You're looking at it through the year, from the first five months, and you're seeing a big increase in, by 8% to this date of GRT. We looked at it from the totals at the end of the year for all the other years, and it seems to be a lot. Because if you look at gross receipts average, it looks like it's averaging, you know, in the 150s, 140s. Those bad years kind of spike the years. I believe that 119, then it jumped up to 128, then it jumped up to 139. The way this form is driven, those spikes would result in a spike at the end, not trying to match with all the other years of 148, 146, 147. So those big spikes in those bad years, when it's starting to recover, affects the 2007 spikes.
I can understand, you know, again, remember you've talked about, right now, you're going back to 1999. And earlier on in the, in the week, again, when Gary was present, we were looking at a nine-year, nine-year period in which there was going to be a selection of years. If you recall, remember I said the three-year model is what originally BB Mar was looking at? And as far as I'm concerned, Carlos, that's what he was saying. And then things changed, I haven't seen Carlos around. And then it went from, from three years to a five-year model. And then it went from a five years to nine years. And then it, then certain years, and I was concerned because when you go back five years, the whole problem with BB Mar... the whole problem with BB Mar at the time was, man, you know, bad stuff happened. You had all this punk song one, and SARS, and 9/11. So there was all this instability, and that's why, actually, I'm gonna be conservative. O of B, and I, hey, I'm the first one to say it, I'm tracking it, O of B at 150, but I'm only using the three-year methodology. I want to be conservative, and I'm looking towards the administration. They obviously have all those folks at BB Mar that have done their calculations together with Gary, and, um, and, um, who else is there? Gary, Department of Administration. Got a whole bunch of smart folks. But the only concern I have now is, is is that what I see, but even in the three-year model, with the three-year model that we've calculated, it's at 170. So somehow, somehow, in your model, which is anywhere, and whether you interpreted it, again, BB Mar interprets it at five years or nine years, you're looking at, uh, you've taken certain years, you're not, it's not three consecutive, or five consecutive years, or nine consecutive years, but you've taken different years out based on what your, the administration's opinion is on what are for softening, and which means it's taking in all these anomalies or aberrations. And with that, again, just based on two or three years of rather consistent, we haven't had a typhoon, we haven't had any, oh, I'm sorry, I jinxed us, I'm sorry. Yeah, let me knock there. I, I'm, again, I understand subjectivity, but what you're telling me, again, what your, what your projections are showing, again, the same as you showed on withholding, and, um, that something's gonna happen between now and the end of the year. Oh, God, I did, excuse me, I did jinxes, didn't we? But obviously, in your projections, you're showing something's gonna happen between now and the end of the year to completely reverse the trends we've had, at least over the past three years, on, on, um, revenue projections. And, and I'm just, I'm gonna word of caution. Obviously, with you folks, is there you have a certain, I mean, when you, when you do these projections, you, you, you had a range, right? So there's a range, so some of these numbers and how you projected them, there's a range.
That's correct, Vice Speaker. And, and, you know, when we did the projections on the GRT, we did adjust the growth rate downward, just to know that it was an achievable growth rate. So that's why we're not predicting any bad things to happen in the economy. We were just trying to kind of
Actually, what you've projected, first five months of the year, we're showing a, again, a 8 to 9 percent growth, and, and then what you're saying for the remainder of the year is not flat. There's contraction.
Oh, yeah.
Because, because, and that, that's what I'm saying. It, it's, it's not flat. It's going from 8 to 9 percent. In order to equalize it downward to where you're at 2 percent or 1 percent, you're saying there's a contractual, because, to make up for the first five years of growth, our first five months of growth, then there's actually gonna be, there's gonna be this flatness and contraction. So I, I, I understand, and it's, right, moving forward, but again, it's conservative. You're doing it for conservative reasons.
And there is some subjectivity to it, right? And there was some judgment in it, and we did, we did use the year-end number, but there are some things in the economy that that are indicators of growth in our economy, that we weren't, we just weren't sure when those revenues would be realized. Like there, like there's an increase in building permits, a sharp increase. But we, we just didn't know how to predict into the economy and into government revenues when that would come. But that certainly is a good indicator of growth.
Actually, if you take, if you take a look at year-to-date on license, you know, this construction boom that's going on here? If you take a look at year-to-date, and we're gonna go to the other ones on licenses and fees, but you're looking at, boy, you're looking at about 200, how much is that? We're looking, year-to-date, for license and fees, 220 percent! When, when, when we get down to the year-to-dates, February, and, uh, this year in February of last year, permits, license and fee, license fees are up by 220 percent. And obviously, that's just because of all these permits, all these, so, and with that, you know, and I, I'll get to that one later. So if you're projecting a flattening of the economy between now and the end of the fiscal year, that, how your projections are showing, that's when I was gonna get to licenses for, you know, for folks that are taking out building permits and all these other things. When you have a 220 percent increase, assumption, subjectivity, again, just me, simple math, you know, simple math, that behind this, this minor permit, that's showing 200-some percent increase, behind that is that there will be, in the future, the building of a hundred thousand dollar building, or a 20 million dollar renovation, or a da-da, da-da-da-da-da, et cetera, et cetera. So, again, it's just, I'm looking at basic numbers, simple little facts, they're not projections, just what we have this year, and what we have from the year before. I look at, I look at, I'm gonna go back to it. You have, and by the way, I'm saying this because I know Wall Street and, uh, and Standard and Poor's, and Bank of America, and the federal government are obviously reading our newspapers online, and are seeing every headline and every television news, and from all indicators from this year to last, from the last year to this year, and I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna be repetitious, corporate income taxes are up 11 percent, individual income taxes are up 31 percent, withholding taxes are flat, but they're flat. We're up only 200,000 bucks, but we're flat. Wasn't a tremendous reduction we had the year before. Gross receipts tax are up between 8 and 9 percent. And again, these little license, license fees and permits are up 220 percent. So me, simple math, looking at between now and the end of the fiscal year, I'm just, I, I don't see these, where yours, what you're seeing, and obviously, I'm hoping nothing bad is gonna happen, but I'm understanding of how you're coming up with these projections. It's a lot of subjectivity, and, um, with this understanding, I'm I'm willing to move forward and willing to be conservative, but I just want to make it clear for Wall Street that, boy, this economy sure looks like it's turning around. And again, I think most important thing is, as we get to the expenditure side, whatever the revenues are here, and whether we agree on 430, or 450, or 460, or 470, when we're spending at 480, that's where the problem is, and that's where we're gonna have to look at trying to bring things down. Anyway, that's all the questions and comments I may have at this point.
All right, thank you. Senator Guthers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This discussion's been very interesting, but I sort of have a different perspective on it, and I need to get some of these questions answered. Please forgive me if it's a little repetitive, but I really need to be sure that I'm interpreting the information accurately that you have shared with us from the governor. Now, on the gross receipts taxes, the bill has a revised gross receipt tax projection revenue of Is that correct? And a little earlier, when you were queried by Senator Calvo, you did indicate that that figure includes the proposed increase from 4 to 5 percent in the gross receipts tax. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Now, the proposed 1 percent increase in the gross receipts tax is actually a 25 percent increase in the gross receipts tax. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, did the governor's office issue a press release stating that the increase in the gross receipt tax would translate into about a 12 million dollar increase for the remainder of this fiscal year? I think he did that last week. In presenting his proposal, he said that the increase in a GRT could generate 12 million dollars for the remainder of the fiscal year.
For the remaining five months.
Of the fiscal year. Correct? Okay. Now, in doing a little math myself, like Senator Calvo, but in a little different way, if I subtract 12 million dollars from 171,001 million dollars, that would mean, without the statutory increase in the gross receipts tax from 4 to 5 percent, the projected gross receipt tax revenue for fiscal year 2007 would be Is that correct? Minus the 12 million from the 171,
I didn't subtract that, so if that's what your, it's probably
Okay. Now, so the number would be, if we take out the proposal to increase the gross receipts tax, would bring down the GRT revenue projection to 159,541,049. Now, last August, I was in the center at that time here at the legislature, however, I remember that the governor was able to convince the 28th Guam Legislature that the projected revenue for the grocery receipts taxes would be 162,565,341. Gentlemen, would I be correct in stating that the grocery seat collections are tracking lower than you, you had earlier predicted?
If you look at the spreadsheet for the first five or, five months of the year, it is tracking above.
You believe it's tracking, tracking higher? The actuals, so far this fiscal year?
Yes.
And at the end of this fiscal year, anticipating an amount higher than the projected amount that was presented to the 28th Guam Legislature? No? That's what I'm trying to get to. That's what I'm trying to get to, Mr. Speaker. The fiscal year 2006 revenue projection for gross receipts tax Now, what was the audited final collection for fiscal year 2006?
I don't believe we have an audited final, but we do have a
Okay, was
It's 154, 186, 164.
So it was less than the revenue projection for GRT for 2006, correct?
Correct.
All right, now, what has been the total collection for the first quarter of 2007? I think you have that figure.
We don't have the
You don't have that figure?
We don't have that sheet.
Do, do, wait, do you know how much you collected in January? Yeah, I, I know, I know, I would like them to share it with us. I'm getting to a point.
Yeah. 15,392,013.
All right. How about February?
13,498,572.
Okay, how about, how, how about so, so far in March? Do you have any idea how much you've collected so far in March?
We don't have that information in front of us.
Now, yeah, yeah. How about October, November, December?
13.5 in October, 13.1 in November, 12.8 in December.
Now, earlier, you folks seemed to have admitted that our corporate taxes are tracking lower than you projected last August. Am I correct? But it's higher than the previous fiscal year, but lower than your original projection. Correct?
That's correct.
You also previously presented testimony here during our committee of the whole that the individual tax collection is actually 38 percent lower than you projected last August.
You know, it's difficult without the numbers in front of us.
Okay, well, we went through that, I think we went through that on Friday last week. We discussed that the first day.
The income, individual income taxes, yes.
here's my point, gentlemen.
All right, the committee of the whole will be in recess for about a minute.
One moment. If this legislature does not support and approve a 1 percent increase in the grocery seats taxes, you are that we would see less GRT of course, than, than you would like to see, correct? And we would all like to see.
That, that's correct.
Okay, now, what I'm concerned about and confused about is the projections that you are making are quite low, and yet, some of the indicators that we have been talking about this evening especially seem quite optimistic about what's happening in the economy. You explain that you have a tendency to be conservative for various reasons, but are you being too conservative?
I guess that's a matter of judgment. What we were not prepared to do in the short time of preparing this budget was kind of anticipate when, because we did notice a large spike in building permits, which means construction is gonna be coming online. We just, in the short time of preparing this budget, did not feel as comfortable anticipating that to come in at any given time. You know, we, we didn't know when that construction was gonna start, but yes, our estimates are conservative in that respect.
And would you would you also say that you're, you're also being too conservative about the level at which you would like to have funds available for tax refunds and EITC?
You're referring to the provision for refunds. That provision is a reflection of income tax collected this year only.
Just this year.
It's not a reflection of what's owed. It's just what is anticipated to be owed this year.
how would this legislature not supporting the 1 percent GRT increase in the governor's bill affect your overall plan to deal with the current problems?
We'd obviously have less revenues to deal with for the operations of the government.
Could you survive without it?
I, I think it's, yeah, I think it's, it's just a matter of how much impact we have on current services is the only question. It's a matter of degrees, I think.
I would suggest it probably would be very important for you folks to think about that, especially for tomorrow, on how the withdrawal of the 1 percent increase would affect your overall plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I want to thank the speaker previous for interesting line of questioning. And I, I think, you know, especially in light of comments made by persons other than myself earlier today. earlier today, you know, it's no secret, guys, that I am not supportive of the notion of increasing the grocery receipts tax by 1%. And just in conversations with members of the body on both sides of the aisle, by the way, Democrat and Republican, I have the distinct impression that it's not a necessarily popular idea with anybody. I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone. I'm not, I'm not headcounting, but I just don't get the impression it's something that either Republican or Democratic senators in this particular legislature are likely to embrace en masse, and I don't think you're going to get eight votes in favor of that. And it is my intention, when we get to the appropriate time, to move to delete that particular thing. I suspect that the motion to delete will probably enjoy a sufficiency of support to affect the deletion. So I think the speaker prior's advice to consider the ramifications is probably well-taken, and it is something that you should probably look at. She also asked a pretty direct question, I thought, John, about whether or not you guys thought you might be being a bit conservative in some of these things. And although I hesitate to bring up, you know, a spreadsheet we have subsequently discarded, one of the interesting notions about that particular spreadsheet was that it projected essentially a GRT collection by the end of the fiscal year that was essentially the same as the figure you're trying to achieve by increasing the grocery receipts tax by 1% for the balance of the fiscal year. And I realize that you have subsequently amended that spreadsheet and now reflects something lower, but it was interesting that as recently as March 21st, there was a spreadsheet being produced that reflected, and March 21st is not a long time ago, it's how many days ago?
Eight.
Seven, eight days ago? So on March 21st, there was produced a spreadsheet seven or eight days ago that said, oh, GRT on its own, without recourse to an increase in the grocery receipts tax, was going to come in, if I remember correctly, something in the neighborhood of 170 million dollars. Which, what was the, remind me, what was the revenue, what was the estimate for GRT contained in the current 2007 budget? 160-something?
168, I believe, 162.
162. So it's interesting that as recently as seven days ago, there was a spreadsheet produced that actually said that there was going to be an increase above the budget of $8 million in grocery receipts tax. One that was produced not on our request, but had already existed prior to this process we are engaged in. And I say that because it was dated, March 21st, so it wasn't produced subsequent to a request by the legislature, it was obviously an internal document. And the fact that such a document exists, whether or not it is currently the document we are using for the purposes of justifying this, must lead me to the following question. Somewhere in the last 10 to 15 days, there have clearly been multiple analyses that have occurred at the behest of someone in the administration, whether it's the Fiscal Policy Group, or the governor, or whomever, I have no idea who it is, that were arriving in a variety of conclusions about where these numbers were supposed to wind up. One product that we saw was a product dated March 21st that said, in the case of grocery receipts tax, even without increasing the grocery receipts tax by 1% for the balance of the fiscal year, we would actually achieve grocery receipts tax $8 million higher than was projected at the beginning of the fiscal year when we passed the budget. I'm not saying that's necessarily valid, I'm saying that product existed. It was obviously distributed, people were looking at it, reading it. I don't know who produced it, I'm not even going to ask who produced it, it's really not relevant to what I'm asking about right now. It's sufficient to say, John, that it did exist, right?
Correct.
And it existed, and it was being looked at by some decision-makers, was it not?
Yes.
And my assumption is that it was probably produced by BBMR or someone like that.
Correct.
So BBMR had a document seven days ago that said, we're going to have GRTs of 170. Now we have a document that says GRTs are going to be considerably less if we don't pass this 1% GRT. Now, the math that the speaker previous engaged in the mathematical exercise, she engaged and indicated that that number would be 150, what was it, Senator?
159.
That's a pretty significant variance between 159 and 171, and it leads me to wonder, were there any other estimates between 159 and 171 that came up in the last 15 to 20 days?
You know, for us, from a forecasting standpoint, it's not an exact science.
That's understood.
And the model doesn't run a hard number. And so we do, we do look at ranges, and what we have come up with as a product was on the lower end of a 90% confidence level range.
So you guys, you guys are producing, and again, this is not an accusatory statement, I'm just trying to, you know, find facts here. You guys are producing a series of various analyses.
Yes.
Some of those analyses had GRTs as high as 170, 171, some of them had GRT effectively When Senator Calvo queried about the five months of actual GRT, there's no dispute, is there, that the first five months are showing a average 9% increase?
No dispute.
Over the prior fiscal year?
That's correct.
And we're not necessarily suggesting in any way, shape, or form that you need to apply this 9% for the balance of the seven months remaining, but the point is, is that if you did, since you are making, you would definitely have more GRT than last year, is what would happen.
Yes.
And what you are instead proposing in the bill is a, is a series of actual results showing 9% growth, followed by a period where either the growth is not going to be 9%, or maybe in some months it's going to be less than last year's actualities.
If you apply it to just the remaining months, correct?
Well, it has to be applied to remaining months, because we do have five actual months, and so whatever number you're going to arrive at has taken into account five actual months of revenue. I understand it's not an exact science. Could you share with me, John, how many different, or at least roughly, how many different outcomes you had when you analyzed GRT over the course of the last few weeks?
We had, the numbers based on the actual tracking, which is the first spreadsheet that you indicated, that indicated between an 8 and 9% growth rate. We also ran some test models against it with some regression in it, and then some subjectivity based on some of the economic activity out there. And so we did come to a range where we actually identified three separate numbers in that range.
So if one...
But they didn't vary outside of that range, but at the 90% confidence level...
So if 159 represents, does 159 in fact represent the lowest of the three options?
Yes.
What were the other two options, more or less? I know I'm asking you to recall a very specific number, that might be difficult, but...
I can't recall...
Was the, was the BBMR...
I can speak more...
I understand. But was the BBMR projection of 170, 171 the highest, or was it a middle-ground one?
That's on the higher level.
Was there one that was higher than 170, 171?
You know, the numbers I do recall are more the aggregate revenue numbers.
All right, then, just throw that out for me. If you had three different aggregate revenue numbers that you guys were looking at, did the 434 that's contained in here reflect...
It's the most conservative of that range.
Or to make it real simple, it's the lowest of the three?
Yes, it is.
All right. What was the middle-range one?
I believe it was 440 or 442.
And what was the upper-range one?
It was in the 450s.
So you had one analysis that came out 450, one analysis that came out in the 440s?
It was the range provided in the same analysis.
Oh, the same analysis provided a range going all the way from 434 to somewhere in the 450s?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, that's a Pon de Rosa kind of almost.
Statistically, you're still within the margin, right? At a 90% confidence level, 5% margin of error, we're still within that range.
But at some point, someone made a policy call and said, we'll take the low, low end of the range.
I think, specific to GRTs, we were just, at an 8 or 9% growth rate in the economy was a little higher than we thought.
Let me ask some questions about that then in particular. Have you seen any increase in business license activity?
Yes, people have been coming in.
Okay. What has been, could you ballpark the increase in business license activity? I mean, is it pretty significant? Is it slightly? Is it, I mean, because that's an indicator that people are out there starting businesses.
There's, I can't quantify, I don't want to say something, and it's not...
Well, how does it feel? You're there, so...
I've seen people come in, into business license, trying to get a license, trying to get clearance, because they need their license.
To open. I understand earlier that there was testimony that building permits have increased by 200%.
That's true.
That's a, that's a good indicator, it's not necessarily the greatest indicator. Is there, is there any, are there any other indicators that you guys are seeing up at Revon Tax that would tend to indicate that business is picking up? Or conversely, are there any indicators you're picking up at Revon Tax that would cause you to believe that business is slowing down?
In ABC and alcoholic beverage control branch, I've seen several licenses go through the board for their approval, probably, like every month, probably about 20, 20, I've seen the last couple of months. See where else. I've seen a lot of clearances, people wanting to do businesses and wanting to clear their taxes, because you need to clear...
In order to be able to get your business license, yeah. So how about rentals? I realize that, you know, a lot of them are getting exemptions from, you know, the Dave Santos and stuff, but they still have to get business licenses, don't they? Or...
House rentals?
Yeah.
Yes, they still have to get.
Are you seeing more rental activity in terms of people going out and trying to rent their houses?
Yes, I've seen some.
Okay. I know, just driving around the island and looking at things, I'm seeing more construction than I've seen in a whole bunch of years, and, you know, I'm seeing residential construction, other types of construction. What about, and I don't know if you, are you in a position to speak to this, but what about real estate transactions in general? Are you seeing more real estate transaction activity?
Yesterday, I went to lunch with some people, and they said last quarter was the highest ever, I don't know if that's true, highest ever in the history of Guam.
So last quarter, which would be the period we're talking about with some of these actuals, was the highest level of real estate activity in the history of Guam?
That's what I heard.
So Art, when you look at this stuff, just, do you feel pretty good about what's happening this year in terms of business activity?
It is, the way I see it, it is booming, it is growing from the other previous years.
So you are seeing the boom, you are seeing growth, you are seeing all those kinds of things right now, and as even primary indicators of this kind of activity. That's a pretty amazing statement, that last quarter was the best quarter in the history of Guam, considering the fact that I remember, you know, back in the boom days of, you know, the 80s, you know, those seemed like pretty hot times, you know, in my memory, and if this is starting to rival that, and I'm not drawing a comparison, I want to be real clear about this, but if we're starting to see real estate activity that is starting to mimic the 80s, Art, you've been up at Revon Tax how long?
Since 1970, 80, I believe.
Okay, so you were at Revon Tax in the period of time I'm talking about. Art, what are the best revenue years we ever had in the history of Guam?
I believe it was around 1990, 91, 92.
Right about the time when real estate was really taking off, right? In that period of time, when the revenues were really booming, it coincided with what I thought was the biggest real estate activity ever up to that point in the history of Guam. So it's fascinating that you would, you know, describe that currently we're about to enter, obviously, into what sounds like it's going to be a pretty booming real estate market, based upon the information that you're providing. I'm not going to ask the question the way that the speaker previous did, she asked it pretty directly about, do you think you're being too conservative? I'm not going to ask you that question, but here's a question I'm going to ask you, and I'll leave it here. You know, looking at the first five months, looking at some of the things that Art is talking about in terms of business indicators that are starting to appear before Revon Tax, and understanding that you had a model in putting this together that gave you a low revenue estimate in aggregate of 434, but a higher revenue estimate in the 450s and a mid-range estimate in the 440s, would it be unfair to say that in preparing this, there is a certain degree of subjectivity?
Yeah, we've stated that, yes, there is subjectivity in it.
And by subjectivity, for those who may not understand, that you haven't done this as a purely objective process of just looking at the numbers and saying, this is where they're going, some degree of subjective decision-making, in other words, well, what do I think, comes into play in doing this, right?
In all forecasting, yes.
Is it possible, as a result, that some of these assumptions, like specifically GRT and perhaps a few of the others, maybe this precipitous decline in, have you gotten, by the way, yeah, I guess you did, this precipitous decline in the withholding that we see in this particular distribution of revenues, where you do have that big precipitous decline, is it possible that, that those numbers might wind up being different than the 434 that you guys are looking at right now?
Yes, it's possible, sir.
Is it just a remote possibility, or is it, if the decision to go one way or the other was a subjective decision, is there, is there, and I'm not necessarily talking about the higher range, but is there an equivalent likelihood that it could wind up in your mid-range estimate?
And still be statistically valid, yes.
Right. And is there also an equivalent possibility that it could end up in the higher range, and that they'd be equivalent in terms of probability?
Yeah, it's all a matter of how we weight the variables.
So as you, as we look at these revenue numbers, and as you look at the revenue numbers, I'd just like you guys to ponder some of these things that you're telling us about, that you're revealing to us, and, you know, just think about it a little bit, you know, and, you know, basically, what I'm hearing is that there's a little bit more fungibility here than, there's a little bit more mutability here, at least malleability, than, than what previously, perhaps, I was under the impression there was. Because I was under the impression initially that some of these things were cast in stone. If they're not quite cast in stone, what you're telling me is maybe they're cast in a little bit of compacted sand, and it could move one way or the other. Well, actually, you don't expect it to move any lower than this, would that be accurate?
Yes, barring any unforeseen circumstances.
Barring any unforeseen natural disasters and stuff, you're saying it's not within the realm of likely possibilities that it could get any lower than 434?
Correct.
And it could be higher?
Correct.
And it could be significantly higher?
Correct.
Within that 90% range? Okay.
All right. Senator Pangelina?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, I think that it's a matter of degree maybe also, with regards to the statement that last quarter may have been the biggest quarter in real estate history on Guam, maybe the biggest transactions, but if you take a look at the transactions, it's things like, you know, the Hilton Hotel being bought for $30 million, whereas in the boom days, when the Hilton Hotel was built, or the tower was built, just a single tower was built for $90 million. So it may be a large activity, but it's at the bottom end range of the pricing. So the dollar values on, we may have 1,000 transactions, but in the boom days, those 1,000 transactions was $1 billion in total value. This day, the 1,000 transaction is $100 million, and not $1 billion, because of the, just the value of the properties of what they're... of the, just the value of the properties of what they're changing hands for. And I think that's the perspective we've got to take a look at. But regardless of that, if, if we're seeing a range here of four thirty-four to four forty to four fifty-four, I'm going to ask you, can we go home if we just decide we're going to pick the four fifty-four and give you the amnesty of $30 million and that takes us to four eighty? And then can we just go home?
That's obviously a prerogative of this body, sir.
No, but if, 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 if that is the, the revenue number that will be accepted for this budget, that we will drive this revenue number to four eighty, with your $13 million cut in the executive order, with an appropriation level of four ninety-six, with a, and, and you, you say with the tax amnesty and the real estate amnesty that generate $30 million in the next three months, without the GRT, that takes us to four eighty. Is it, is that what we're trying to achieve?
You know, in terms of our, in terms of our forecast, like I said, we are seeing some indicators of a strengthening economy. What we cannot predict is when that money actually becomes revenue into this government.
Exactly. That's why I'm asking.
So, there is some, even for this body, there's going to be some subjectivity to how that judgment is made. And what we presented was, what we believed was a conservative estimate as to how those revenues would come in.
And that's why I'm asking, you know, I asked the governor to give us a cash collection schedule.
Correct.
Plus a cash disbursement schedule based on the current operating structure, based upon the reduced, proposed reduced operating structure. And, and, and I think if we see that, then we know what to accept. But that's the confusion, that's, that's what I have here in terms of, you know, everybody seems to say that the economy is going to increase, or at least from this side of the table, where they're a little bit more optimistic. I'm just wondering, what are we doing? I mean, if we're not going to adopt any change, if we're not going to accept the administration's number, if we're not going to present our own analysis and, and, and work product with regards to what we think the revenue is going to be, then what do we do next? Just keep talking? I really think that it's time that we look at these revenue numbers because we, we've exhausted all the questions, I think, really. I mean, I'm, I think we're pretty close to have exhausted, all admissions have been made that everybody's correct, or everybody could be correct.
That's right.
If this is it, we just have to decide from ourselves now, I think from this body's side, you know, am I going to accept the governor's number, or am I going to accept OFB's predictors and indicators and the conclusion that they have? I don't even know what the conclusion is. Is there a conclusion, you know, with regards to the final fiscal year number? We've seen the, the trending and all of those, like I said, all of those are, because every time I hear the good chair ask a question, your answer is correct. So, everything's correct. And we've got to get to a point where which correct are we going to decide, you know?
What we can't dispute is the actuals that were collected, even in draft form.
Right.
But an eight or nine percent clip in economic growth is, it's a pretty hot economy.
It's hotter than China's. China's not even growing at eight or nine percent. I think China's at seven, you know? And, and that is a booming economy, you know? So, I, I really, and I just don't see, you know, the investment coming in here, you know, that to the level that I'm seeing the investment going to China from just reading the financial papers and so forth. So, I mean, I, I tend to, that's why I said, let's split the difference and, and, or whatever. But really, I think it's time that we move, you know, with regards to this. I mean, the, the only motion that's been passed is to substitute and to accept the motion to increase the provision for refunds.
Take more revenues off the bottom line.
It's time to, to make some motions to accept, amend, delete, so that we can proceed, I think. And, and everyone has their own assumptions and their reasons for those assumptions. And I think that we really have to place them on, on the table and move forward because if we are to target an April first, you know, then it's, it's tomorrow, day after tomorrow. So, so, Mr. Chair, I thank you for all the analysis that you've done, but I'm waiting for some kind of motion on, on the issue of the revenues and so forth, because we have discussed the difference of opinion based upon the differences and based upon an acceptance of the actuals, you know, and so forth. So, but the, the problem is that even if we took the range of, of four fifty, the high range and at an eighty or in, you know, the, the four thirty may be a 95% confidence level, the four fifty may be a, you know, an 80% confidence level.
No, I asked that question specifically because I was curious about that, Senator Pangalina. And what I was told was the confidence level is the same regardless of which number you picked. Remember I asked that?
It's a range.
I said, so you're telling.
Within the 90% confidence level, this is within the margin for error.
Within the margin of error.
Right.
Okay. So, again, if we adopted the four fifty, you know, we're, we're back to where we are in this budget at four fifty-four. So, and in addition to that, we have upped the revenues to include the $30 million in, if we accept that number, the $30 million in amnesty collections. We are then have made up for the govern, for the overappropriation or the, the, even if, even if we deduct the $25 million in lapse appropriations, we're still there because we've now substituted this phantom dollar for this predictable collection dollar of $30 million to fund the operations beyond the four fifty-four of what we thought our revenue was going to be. Is that a kind of correct capitalization of, of this whole presentation?
Here's what I can say. I can say that admittedly, our growth rate for the GRT is at about two to three percent.
Right.
At the high end, it's about eight or nine percent.
Right.
Let's also be clear about one thing. A growth rate for a particular tax like GRT does not translate into a, a growth rate in terms of national product or the entire economic activity of a community or nation or, no one was saying that Guam is growing at a 9% clip. I certainly am not making that assertion. I'm just noticing that I'm seeing over the course of five months, that kind of growth in one particular very narrow tax. That's all I'm saying. I'm not in any way, shape or form suggesting that the economy of Guam is booming at 9% growth.
But, but in every other, in every other category here, we've disputed the decrease and we're saying it's increasing.
No, 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 we're not disputing anything. We're just saying, if you take a look at the first five months' actuals, you see 3% growth here, 2% growth here, you know, this percent growth here, and in GRT, it's, it's pretty significant. Let's just be clear that when, you know, when we make a statement about, about China's growth rate, you're talking about the, the growth rate of the entire economy of China when we're talking about a, a, a rate in GRT, talking about the rate of, of increase in one particular tax.
I understand that.
Okay, just, just.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and redirect the conversation to the panel rather than intercourse with the two gentlemen, so.
I know, so, again, what, you know, Senator Pangalina? I'm just, I, I'm beginning to, you know, to, to try and, and, and push this process along because really, if, if all we're going to do is jaw ourselves to death here, you know, somebody's got to make a motion so that we take some action.
Actually, that's not accurate. If we're going to be very procedural about this, and I'm going to interject here, no one has to make a motion to accept these numbers. We can simply move forward. They are, you don't need a motion to accept. You need a motion to amend or to delete. So, if no one makes a motion to amend or no one makes a motion to delete, then by...
They've been accepted.
They've been accepted.
So, by the, by the virtue of, we are now in, in, in corporate, we are now in GRT, we've accepted the $61 million?
No, I guess no one paid attention.
Then that's, then what you said is just not true.
No.
Because we've gone past that.
No. This morning, when we made the motion, we said we would continue to accept motions to amend or delete on the contents of this thing.
Absolutely.
So, if anybody...
We substituted this.
Right. So, if anybody wishes to make a motion in those areas, Senator Pangalina, they can. I am just disputing the statement.
But you're saying if nobody made a motion to amend or delete?
I am disputing the statement, Senator Pangalina.
And we've moved forward?
Senator Pangalina.
And we've accepted it?
No.
No?
I am saying that when we get to the end of revenues, if no one makes a motion to amend or delete, then that is acceptance. That's what I'm saying.
Senator Pangalina?
But, again, you know, Mr. Chair, I just think it's, it's, it really, you know, there's, there's got to be some, there's a deadline, there's, we've got these people here, you know, and, and they've been very patient, but I think it's, it really, we need to, we need to, to move a little faster. And we need to, to structure the discussion from a little bit more of a general discussion to a, to a discussion that'll take us to the process necessary to, to make a decision on this bill. And I know we're moving, I, I thank everyone for the indulgence and the good chair and so forth, but it, it's just frustrating that we've gotten all these presentations, but we're not making any decisions. And so, I just wanted to, to, given the, the presentation made, kind of try to capitalize where we're at, where, where the present, we're here because we don't think we're going to get four fifty-four. We're here because an appropriation of $25 million to use from prior year's lapses. First, basically, we're here because we adopted revenues of four fifty-four and we told the governor that he can go out and spend four eighty or four ninety-four. That's the bottom line. And the governor, even though he knew that revenues were going to be at four fifty-four and that the $25 million in lapse was not going, was, was not there, he went and get and, and authorized spending at four eighty-four or four ninety-four. And we've got to just clip that, if we're going to clip it, or drive the revenues up to support that. And if we're going to do it by the tax amnesty program, or if we're going to do it by changing the, the assumptions that the administration, or changing the adoption of the figures by the administration to try and drive it up in that, into that area by retaining or, or even increasing based upon actuals, the, the revenue figures, then I, you know, I'd just like to see that done. Somebody ask me to make a decision, please. Thank you.
All right. Speaker Forbes is recognized.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, I'm going to just make a very short comment. I appreciate the lecture on how we need to make motions. Note that no motion was made during the course of the lecture. Thank you.
I move that we adopt section one.
Um, there's a motion to, okay, we are in the discussion of Bill Number Seventy-Four and have substituted prior and made a, a amendment with respect to the provisions for tax refunds and reverted back to $75,600,000.
Yes, that was my motion.
That, that is his current state. The, we are in a discussion on section one, which deals with general fund revenues and are continuing with the discussion on withholding taxes. Senator Cavell? I'm sorry? We, the, the entire discussion, we're trying to move from one to the other as we originally had discussed. On this, at this point, we are discussing GRT and the gentleman made a motion to adopt this section.
No, there was...
On the motion, there is no objection.
No, no, there is no motion. You don't make motions to adopt. You make motions to amend or delete. The absence of motions is the adoption. So, that's my whole point. If, if Senator Pangalina simply doesn't want to discuss revenues anymore, then, you know, he can make a motion to cease discussing revenues, but you don't make motions to adopt. That's why I think the speech was, was...
I move that we get our permanentarian to rule on that.
In, in fact, Bill Seventy-Four is before the body. We're in the committee hall. The process by which the changes are made to the bill is section by section. If there are any changes to be made through the bill, that would be done through an amendment or through a motion by a member on the floor. If there is a motion to either strike out or to change the figures, those are, those are called for. We are still on section one.
That's right. And at the end of the section, if, I agree with the, with the speaker, if, at the end of the section, if there's no motion to amend or delete, then, then it's adopted.
Then we move on to section two.
Let's, yep, let's...
That's correct.
So, can we just keep going?
So, we're on section one and the discussion is on GRT.
And before anyone jumps to anything else, I, I want to make an amendment, just because there's a, I've noticed something here. If you take a look at the original budget law that was, was enacted, Public Law Twenty-Eight Dash One Four Nine, I, I'm looking at the original law. And the original law, we have chapter one, general provisions, section one, short title. I don't, you folks don't have it, but I'm just reading it and I've got a copy of it. And then section one with the short title, and this was the title, then we went to section two in chapter one. This was all chapter one. So, it was chapter one, general provisions, section one, short title, and then it went, and then it went to section two, which was estimated revenues for fiscal year 2001, LSR Turn Guam. And then, of course, those were the adopted numbers of Twenty-Eight Dash One Four Nine. Then I'm looking at this, the bill that was sent over by the governor, and it's Bill Number Seventy-Four, and if you take a look at it...
There is no section one.
There is chapter two, amended revenues estimate for fiscal year 2007, and then it goes to section two.
There is no section one.
And the problem I have here is there, this, and I was a little concerned because now people are talking about all these, before we do anything, I think, but whatever, wherever we go, we've got to make a correction here. So, this should be chapter one. This should be chapter one, not chapter two. So, in this amended revenues estimate that was submitted by the administration, it states chapter two, section two. We should have it, if we're going to amend it, it should be amending the revenue estimates as of chapter one, section two. Is that the right, so, what I like to do is I like to move, make a motion to amend that in page three, that chapter two be replaced by chapter one, to be consistent with Bill, Public Law Twenty-Eight Dash One Four Nine.
Chair, just a question.
Senator Cavell? Or Senator Shemiz?
Yeah, well, you, I'm, I'm looking at the, what was presented today in the transmittal memo, and then I'm looking at what was, what we had originally. I don't see no difference. In my copy, I don't see it at all, as, as how you read it, so.
Sure.
I, I'm...
Senator Cavell?
Yeah, you don't have it. I, because I had a copy of the law and the, there's a public law, since they're amending Public Law Twenty-Eight Dash One Four Nine, and I get, we spotted this, I, the, the law is chapter one. And in chapter one, there's two, there's section one, which is a short title, and then there's section two, which is estimated revenues for fiscal year 2007. The Bill Number Seventy-Four is, in this amended revenues estimate for section two, it let, it, it stipulates chapter two. So, I'm just for the purposes of making sure we, we don't mess up chapter two, which is the real law, with the existing law, so, so it should be chapter one. So, that, that's it. Senator, you don't have a copy, but I'm, I have a copy of the existing law. So, I just want to make this consistent in this amendment, now whether we, whether we, however we move on this particular section, I just want to make sure we make this correction.
Your motion then is to change what exactly? Chapter?
It, it, it should be in page three. It should be in line one. It should be chapter one.
All right. With respect to, to, to the benefit of the body, Public Law Twenty-Eight One Forty-Nine, chapter one is general provisions?
Yeah.
And...
Mr. Chair?
Just a moment. And in section two is estimated revenues. Chapter two deals with education. So, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and call for a brief recess and we're going to go to come back and discuss this further. Committee holds a recess.